I'll make you look good.
For call to mean the words for legislative session 2025, that's 13, the county council, July 1st, 2025. Those who like to stand and join us in Lord's Prayer and pleasurable reason, please do.
Hark on heaven, thou be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, honor of the citizens of heaven, give us this day our daily bread, and free us from our trespasses. So we can hear the rest of the trust and justice, and please not to endanger the nation, but deliver us to the people, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Please signify, the United States of America, and to your beloved, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Entertaining motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Any discussions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, consent agenda passes. This time we have a proclamation to recognize National Parks as Recreation Month. We have Mr. Steve Miller here today. Very good. Steve, good to see you. We have fans.
All right. Well, we have, like you said, we have a proclamation for National Parks and Rec Month. Thanks for Steve being here. So this proclamation, whereas parks and rec programs are an integral part of communities and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining quality of life, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of the community and regions. And whereas park and rec recreation programs provide recreation services to improve the health of citizens and build healthy communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, and whereas park and rec programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased tourism, attraction, and retention of business, and crime reduction. And whereas our parks and natural recreation area ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for citizens to connect with nature and recreate outdoor. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks Recreation Month, and recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreational resources. Now therefore, the Waco County Council hereby designates the month of July 2025 as National Park and Rec Month in Waco County County. Sorry about that. So this is Steve Miller, and he's our director of Parks and Rec. And I have to say, I sit on his committee, and I am thoroughly impressed. I mean, he juggles many, many hats. He's got a huge job, and I think he's got a nice vision, and he tries to make everybody happy. And that's, you know, you can't do that, but he tries. But other than that, I'd like to.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilman Winn, Mr. President, and members of council. Thank you for the proclamation and the recognition. I recognize that the council and the executive have been very supportive. We've made significant investments in recreation parks in recent years. We've made significant improvements, and many improvements are in progress and on the way. So want to thank you for that. It's great to drive by parks and see them full and see people active and engaged, and that's wonderful. I also want to recognize our staff. I'm preaching to the choir here, but we all know that we're as good as the people that we have. And I represent a lot of really, really good people who work in our parks and recreation system and across our department, who care a lot, who work real hard or out there in the heat doing the things that we got to do, and truly love what they do and are proud of what they do. And I'm awfully proud to be a part of them. So again, thank you for this. Exciting days ahead, and again, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have two public hearings on the agenda this evening. A public hearing notice was published on the county's website and/or the local newspaper for each of the public hearings. The first public hearing is on resolution number 93-2025. This is to approve the relocation of a forest conservation easement containing 0.28 acres located on tax map 37, parcel 457, owned by Melissa Justice and Larry O. Tallis III. Parker and Associates has submitted a request to relocate the existing forest conservation easement on a parcel located in the Salisbury election district. The proposed relocation would keep the easement on the same parcel at a one-to-one ratio. This relocation is necessary to accommodate the establishment of a new sewage reserve area as required by the county health department. And we have Mr. Colin Harrison here, environmental planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on resolution number 93-2025. If you have any comments you'd like to make or preferences to this specific resolution, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Includes the public hearing on resolution number 94-2025. Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 94-2025.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I said 94, I'm sorry, 93-2025. Give a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Yes.
Colin.
Harrison?
Good evening, council. Colin Harrison, environmental planner.
Just a question, I guess, on this. I was trying to understand the property. Is this the Dollar General, or is this residential?
This is a residential lot.
So it's right behind that, I guess, that space? Is that what's?
Correct.
And then, okay. And then it's just being replaced one-to-one ratio?
That's right, onsite. So they had to relocate the rest of the best suitable location, and they have existing forest onsite. So they're able to just redo the lines.
Great. I thought so. Appreciate your hard work on that.
No problem. Thank you.
Other questions? Any comments? All those in favor of resolution 93-2026, 25, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Next is the public hearing on resolution number 94-2025. This is to amend the fiscal year 2026 capital budget to authorize the county executive to accept monies from the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund for two capital projects within the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. This request is to add two projects to the FY26 capital budget. They are the Billie Jean Jackson Park. This is going to add grant funding in the amount of $60,000 to install new parking lot lights. And Emerson Holloway Master Planning is the second project, and this will add grant funding in the amount of $35,000 to develop a park master plan to consider reconfiguration and modernization. And Mr. Steve Miller is here if you have any questions.
Mrs. Hurley, at this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on resolution number 94-2025. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on resolution 94-2026. Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 94-2026?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
I just want to say thank you, Mr. Miller, for that.
Just for clarification, it's 94-2025.
Yes.
They did say 2026 initially on the agenda, but we did update that, so it would say 2025.
They told me.
Yes.
Did I get a motion to second on 25?
Yes.
Okay, so make sure. Thanks.
Okay, now, I lost my place.
You're on discussion.
Okay, fine.
And I just said thank you.
Yes, okay. Any other comments? Steve, did you have any wanted to? Okay. All those in favor of resolution 94-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, resolution passes.
Next on the agenda is resolution number 95-2025. This is approving a multi-year contract agreement with KCI Technologies for the Salisbury septic elimination project on behalf of the Department of Public Works. And we have Mr. Adam Corey here, environmental health officer.
Thank you. Entertaining motion from council to approve resolution 95-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Corey?
Good evening. Good evening, council. Adam Corey, Executive Director of Environmental Services, DPW.
Making headway, aren't we?
A little bit. This one's coming close. Got some good news back from the state today, too. We've been waiting on the concept of what these state revolving fund applications were going to look like. The state released that public documentation today. I haven't had a full chance to digest it. We're going to get it out to you as well. That's good. Our project ranked very high for the septic elimination project for City Salisbury, for the areas right there we've been talking about, north-south Delano Avenue, President's Neighborhood, Regency. Those are the ones. That's looking good.
Good. Is that the document that comes back with comments or no comments?
No. So all that's been done, our comments, our PFA areas, all that stuff, that was stuff we'd done last year. This was our actual application for funding.
Great. Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. I know we're supposed to set up a water and sewer committee. Where are we at on that?
Sure. So we should be having our legislative review in front of you for July 15th meeting. Because we've been in front of you a couple times so far for the preliminary stages of it. Mr. Wilber has redeveloped the legislation after the comments we took from council for sanitary commission sanitary district. And then we should be here in July 15th. That's my goal, to actually create it. Now, just to remind everybody, it wasn't necessary for this project because we're not going to own and operate these wastewater lines. The Department of Public Works effectively, for lack of a better term, quarter backed this project for the city of Salisbury in the interest of the protection of public health, because of the areas that are all completely surrounded by services for the city of Salisbury. These were the Donuts or Islands. So this one doesn't necessarily have anything to do with the sanitary district because we're not going to own or operate these lines, and we're not taking fees for it. This is going to be the city's infrastructure.
The $600,000 for the design, how does that get paid back to the rest of the taxpayers?
Sure. Right. Like we've talked about before with these kinds of projects, you forward fund, and then you go to the state for funding. And like I said just today, the state released its funding analysis for the state revolving fund. So we'll get X amount in grant, X amount in low-interest loan. The whole idea was, we would not proceed with any of this project, including placing infrastructure in the ground, until you have assurances from the state they're going to give you that money. Yeah, that's how it gets paid back.
Is the homeowner in these areas?
Now that we have, like we've talked about before in front of council, now that we have the information from the state saying that we are getting the money, now it's time to go out and have the public outreach. And part of KCI's contract is included in that, is that outreach to the communities that are going to be affected directly. So now we get to start actually taking the show on the road and spreading the good news.
So we do have an obligation from the state that's going to, that's going to fund these areas?
Yes, sir. Both septic elimination, which means the actual abandonment of the tanks, I know you'd asked about that a couple of weeks back, for connection itself through the funding, and then the rest of the actual project, whether it be design, oversight, infrastructure in the ground, the actual physical work, is going to go through funding, grant funding, and low-interest loan. That's how the state revolving fund works.
The tanks, who pays for that?
This fund, this fund and low-interest loan will pay for it.
So they'll go into people's property and dig up the tank?
Correct. And make the connection.
Make the connection.
Yeah, they'll come out of, they'll stop out from the side of their home, wherever their sewer lateral is coming off, out to the septic tank, disconnect, flange, connect to the main that's going to go to the trunk line in the road for the city services, connect their water. And there's parts of the neighborhoods that are in this batch that already have public water from the city of Salisbury, others have drinking water wells. Those wells will be abandoned, septic tanks will be abandoned, then they'll be piped right into the city.
Will there be any cost to the citizens on this?
The cost to the citizens, like we've discussed before every time we've been in front of you with this, is that they will pay an out-of-town service fee and play, pay a water bill to the city of Salisbury.
I know about the water bill and the septic bill, but will they have a hookup fee?
So the hookup fee is going to be covered under SRF funding. Yeah, that's good. That's part of the reason we put it in our application to the state. You don't want to burden homeowners with that, especially when you're coming in saying, hey, we want to get you connected for the good of, you know, the common good, and because it makes sense that you're already surrounded by public water and sewer. We want to make sure we put it in our grant application to the state. Please cover connection costs.
Almost sounds too good to be true, doesn't it?
Well, honestly, I've been doing this for a long time with the state, and this is the first project I've had come to fruition being on the county side here. And it almost does sound too good to be true. But this is a really, really good program. The Bay Restoration Fund monies have been in there, and it's, I mean, I know the state's not in good financial terms, but these monies for the state, whether it's Bay Restoration Fund, State Revolving Fund, those monies are dedicated because they're so important to public health.
So how are we going to, is the county executive going to submit names for this sanitary commission?
For your review, yeah. And then it's up to the council to decide if those potential people are going to be suitable. Obviously, we've got the criteria in the legislation that they have to have background in, you know, certain aspects and genres, either science, infrastructure, capital projects, so on and so forth, to sit on that commission. And then, you know, as a council, excuse me, as a council, as a Department of Public Works, as a commission, we all three get together and say, what's our, what's our next targets on the, on the board to see where we can make a difference in the community? And then the council would say, we accept or, you know, disagree with your recommendation. And if you like something, we take it to this stage, and if we can get it funded, we try to move forward. If we can't get it funded, go back to the drawing board.
Can't get it funded, what happens to the $600,000 that we've already spent?
So you have to forward fund the project. So this, this money that we will spend will be reimbursed regardless. Like if it, we're going, that's already accounted for. Like we wouldn't go forward with this without getting the funding back from this, from the state. That's, you know, when we've been in here, like, I think the last time was me, Amanda, and Mike talking about it, and you have to forward fund the project. That's the way the state does it. Once you've got your project up on its feet, the state says okay, this is what we're going to give you as far as dollars and cents are concerned. And at that point, you make the decision to either go forward or say, well, we're not going to get the funding we need, we back off. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just for the record, I thought that I had heard with Ms. Paul's presentation that the septic tanks actually did not have to be removed.
They'll just be abandoned in place.
Just abandoned.
Yeah. The contractor will literally pump out the effluent that's still in the tank.
Covered up.
Crush the top end with a back end of a tobacco bucket and just fill it in. Yeah. It's kind of a mess to pull them out. A real mess.
I have one question, because I know most of the people live on Delano. Suppose they don't want to acquire a bill. Suppose they don't want to participate in this program?
Sure, understood. So these were areas that were identified way back in the white paper, if you will, and then the health department identified them as potential failing septic system areas. And then, of course, they were in the islands. It is our job now, Ms. Shields, there's no doubt about it, to go out there and really ensure they understand what they're getting, okay? The benefit to them from a long-term strategy of their property's value, not having to worry about having to pump and haul a holding tank, makes sense from the standpoint that we're doing gravity sewer here. We're not having to put in pump stations for this, which cuts down on the cost as well. I can empathize with the concept of a homeowner saying, well, listen, I've never had a bill before for water and sewer. I can also empathize with the homeowner that's begging me to make sure they get water and sewer because they've got no other choice. It's a fine line to walk. I understand both ends of the argument. But once we have it, once we have a design, and once we implement it in the ground, I mean, we have to make sure our communities are served properly, and it's really an outreach, it's an outreach effort to make sure they understand it's in their best interest.
And I will contact you, but I do have a meeting in places in the neighborhood.
That's what I want. Yeah, this is, like I said.
I'll call you. I've got to contact.
Great.
Minister, and then I'll, because most of them go down.
Sure.
And I'll, and I'll call you.
That's going to be awesome. We're going to certainly need that kind of collaboration because I don't want to drag people out of their neighborhood to come to wherever else. I want to go meet them where they are, and it's going to be a good time. Yeah, for sure. There's some growing pains with it, but I'm really, really happy that we're here today. And having, and having on July 1st, Happy New Year, by the way, having the state come in and say, hey, we're releasing our, releasing our documentation on SRF. That was good. That was cool.
I just want to note that the Bay Restoration is funded through 2030, or at least authorized state level, should be a consistent fund. I'm not sure, even though I know the state can go in and grab monies, but usually don't for that. But I'm, this is such a need, this is probably the one, this is a top-three thing that I've ever had of constituents calling me, is that they want to know, how can they be a part of the city of Salisbury? And they're, I mean, we, I don't want to go ad nauseam about that. You all have heard me before, but we should not have septic systems this close to wells, to drinking water. And this was, you know, they built most of these homes right after World War II, and they stuck them really close together. But, you know, you got folks taking prescription medication, and it's going right through their bodies into the water, and then their neighbors drinking it up. And this is an awful situation, and it's across the state, but we should never have this level of density for something like that.
Certainly. And I appreciate that comment, Councilman Hastings, and assure in the future, as we do look forward to other projects in the county, the ones that we've already shared with you previously in our previous presentations. And then, of course, other ones that we need to hear from your input, from your constituents, the constituencies that you serve in your districts about, this is an area. I mean, look, the health department's got great information on where some of these problem areas are. I spent a lot of time in those areas when I was with MDE. We know where they are for the most part. It's just which ones do we want to pick first, which ones make the most sense. And this one just happened to be the easiest one to grab first, for a lot of reasons.
Most people don't even know that that's part of, that most people think this is already in the city.
Yeah.
So I appreciate you going after this. I think it makes a whole lot of sense. Glad to see this.
Absolutely.
I've said before, I'm glad to see we're really taking tangible steps, that you can fully recognize the plan coming to fruition. The 605, is that all forward funding?
This, this portion?
Yes.
All forward fund.
Because I said, going back probably three, four, or five years when, when all of this was being discussed, Greater Salisbury County, with their self-appointed committee that they had, and Amanda was a big part of that. And I've always said, where are we going with the, with the carrot or the stick? Where are we going? And are we going to have to talk to all these, all these homes in these neighborhoods, and are we going to have to say, we recognize that you don't want to get hooked up? And my feeling was that the only reason, way we were going to accomplish this end game was going to be to have to admit that a good portion of these costs were going to have to be absorbed by the government. I'll say that because I'd rather it be the state, or whether we, if we ever to get federal, and however it might break down, hopefully not the county. But, you know, for hookups, you know, to not have to tell someone, you don't have to spend $20,000 for a hookup. I don't want to go into these neighborhoods and start saying that. Also, there could be some resistance when you're saying, you're not going to be getting a $300 water bill every quarter. And it's probably going to be 300 in that range. So my question is, where are we with the carrot or the stick? Because now we are talking about finance, we're right where we want to be. But where have we, have we really recognized yet the carrot and the stick, and what happened?
Think we have.
Trying to get all these people together?
Certainly. And again, we had to get to this point.
Understood.
Before we can really start to make the outreach to the, to the communities. For every constituent that says, I don't want to pay a water and sewer bill, I probably got three or four more behind them saying, hook me up today, because of whatever problem they're experiencing. Or in the future, or if they can't go into the health department and get a application or a permit for anything on their property. They can't even put an above-ground pool on it, you know what I mean? Because this constraints of the well and well setback in the septic area where it's located may be too much. That's just like one example. When you, when you have an area that you've identified in collaborative effort with the city, if it's Infrastructure and Planning Department, the aspects of protection and environmental health, and, and the health department itself, as far as onsite sewage disposal concern, it makes good sense to do this for the common good. I know that's kind of a government, a cheesy government answer, but, well, right, but there is truth to it. There is truth to it. So again, like I said, Councilwoman Shields, I do empathize with the situation of folks saying, I don't want to pay a water and sewer bill. It's, it's going to be my job to go out there and say, let me try to convince you why. I mean, I want to, I don't want to do that with no preconceived notion of thinking I know better than anybody who owns their property. That's their property. But when we identify an area like this, when we identify an area like the Old Ocean City Road Corridor, for example, we, again, the good, the good outweighs the bad. And when, when you get it to the point of having a design, and you have the funding in place from the state, they've ranked your project and said, this is worthwhile, we're going to back it, you know, you're not going at it alone. Again, I'll repeat, like I said to Councilman Holloway, we, we make sure we add it into our application for the structure of the SRF, that we want it connected, we want these connections and abandements covered. It's one thing to be able to talk a homeowner into paying a water and sewer bill for their own good of their property. It's another thing to say, here's a water and sewer bill. Oh, and by the way, I need you to pay $25,000 to hook up. We don't want to do that kind of stuff. So carrot and stick, to me, the carrot at the end of the stick is the name of protection of public health, and making sure the residents in our county have something they can live with for a long, long time. And that's not onsite sewage disposal.
So when this was proposed to the state of Maryland, does that question get asked from the state of Maryland? You're planning on putting this infrastructure into these neighborhoods. Does the state say, does the public want it? Is that part of the questions that they ask?
The state doesn't, the state doesn't ask that in any verbal sense. They ask it in a couple of different ways. They say, what is the, what's the demographic of the area? What is the EJ score? They look at, the EJ score goes into it very, very heavily. Then they say, what's your, you know, rate, if you will, of onsite sewage disposal failure, replacement? What are those kinds of criteria? Has it been identified as a priority funding area? Have you identified it in your comprehensive water and sewer plan as an area that you want to serve? If you've checked all those boxes, then your project gets ranked versus others. Especially when it's to serve existing communities and not for growth, the state is even more in tune to say, we're going to put our, our faith and money behind this. And that's where this is, yeah.
In this, in this map overlay that we have here, I couldn't guess, and maybe the information's in here, but the number of houses, I'm not quite sure.
It was almost 200 EDUs, give or take.
200.
Yeah.
Okay. And believe me, I want this to succeed 100%. What, what happens in the worst case? Because you always, you need to evaluate the worst-case scenario. What happens if only 60 of them want to sign on? Do we continue with the infrastructure?
The infrastructure's going in the ground, for sure.
Regardless of the infrastructure.
Yes. And typically, depending on how this, and again, they just were released this morning. I was working on other landfill things, so I have not fully digested. But the state has the criteria lined out in the, in your funding, depending on the percentage of whether or not you have the grant, which percentage of it's grant, by which percentage of it is low-interest loan. And they say, there are certain aspects of this, whether this is a, excuse me, a denied access line, for example. That doesn't, that doesn't matter in this one.
Access lines, yeah.
But they may say, this one is in the interest of public health. That's the argument that we're making. Once you've got the infrastructure available, you have to connect. Now, you've got other places in the state where we've put infrastructure in the ground, and they say, well, you're going to connect, you can allow your septic system to stay in place until it fails. Once it does, you have no choice but to connect. Because at that point, the health department won't be able to issue you a permit, because it would effectively violate the other side of the code. So, but at that point, though, the issue you run into sometimes is if you're not willing to hook up when it goes down the road, if you wait, and two years later, your septic fails, then you are going to pay a connection fee because we're going to spend that money elsewhere.
That's an interesting reality. That's true. I had always said, and it's only me speaking, but I've always said, maybe the process we need to do is pay for the hookup. We know we should do that. But possibly to say, okay, for your first year, it's only going to be $100 a quarter.
Subsidize it, like, or prorate it.
And then, yeah, and then gradually increase it over the period of maybe three years, and say, by the three years, you'll be at the full rate. I don't know if that's been considered.
So this is a great idea when we start to get into projects for the sanitary district and commission, right?
Okay.
This one is going to be, again, owned and operated by the city of Salisbury. So it's the city of Salisbury's rate structure, it's their fees. We can certainly have a conversation with them, but that would be a city of Salisbury decision.
Two things. How are they going to be billed? Are they billed on, on usage, flowage, or are they billed on footage on the front of the house?
I'd have to go back to the city of Salisbury's Urban Service District, or that's not actually what it's called, but out of town. So it's changed names a few times. But I don't believe the document we utilized from the city to make the application for the comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment had the rate structure in it. I would, I can certainly get you that information from the city of Salisbury. Again, that's going to be, that's going to be out of their, out of their shop, is where the billing is going to come from.
Based on how many toilets and how many faucets they may have in.
Uh, is that how it is over there?
Maybe, how many faucets?
It's how many faucets.
Yeah.
Toilets and all that.
Good.
Or maybe they don't do that anymore. I don't know. Pittsfield does, Pittsfield does road frontage.
Water meter flow.
Water meter flow should be the way to go. Yes.
So, if I may, Pam Olin, Finance Director, I used to work for the city of Salisbury. So at least when I was there, if they had both water and sewer, it was based on flow of water.
Oh, you're right, yeah.
So it's, it's based on flow of water. Now, they did decouple. It used to be sewer was coupled with water as to a, like a multiplier, one was a multiplier, the other. They have decoupled that, but it's still based on the same flow. If they are not connecting to the water, which it sounds like we're also putting in the water.
There's going to be both, except for portions of the neighborhood that already have city water. There are already, there's fuel.
So in the areas that have just sewer, which I don't believe this section is going to be, it is, I, it used to be based on number of fixtures in the home. But again, if this is going to be with a water meter being installed, it will be based on the flow of the water. Sorry.
No, 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 hey, don't go.
No, you're fine. Thank you. I think you're being really highly optimistic about how many people's going to want it. I recall when Pittsfield went to city water, they, there was a lot of people that.
I can understand that.
They had a big fight on it, but they got through it. How, how about the repair of the streets? Who's going to be responsible for repaving? streets? Who's going to be responsible for repaving?
So it's all, it's all going to be in the design, right? And then the contractor will be responsible for the street.
So they'll repave the street?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
To city specifications?
Yes, sir, without a doubt.
Well, county.
It is county, yeah.
County specifications, okay.
Yeah, we're not to that phase yet. This contract is strictly for design and outreach and all that.
Just to provide some color or commentary on this, by the way, I've had a half dozen times since I've been on the council that I've had a landowner or a person who owned a house, and they basically, they find out when they go to sell the house that the septic is failing. They've known for years that it didn't really quite operate like it used to, but it's working, right? It still flushes as it goes down. When it backs up, that's usually when people get upset, and that's usually when they call. But in one situation, pardon me, I've had two situations where it's been an elderly couple on a fixed income only, you know, almost no money, and basically, you know, they find out that they have to, you know, they have to replace the septic system, and that's been quoted anywhere. I mean, it started, when I first started the council, you know, maybe you could get away with $34,000, but now it's over $40,000.
Easily.
So would you, and they were begging me to try to help them find a way to pay $25,000 instead of paying $40,000 in order just to hook up to the City of Salisbury. They'd pay any connection fee. In this case, they don't have to pay a connection fee, and they then don't have to pay that $40,000. So if you could save someone $40,000 or $45,000 more realistically these days, that's a pretty substantial. So the way it's going to naturally play out is you're just going to have people who are going to sell their house or their situation. I had another one who was a person inherited the property and they go to find out, you know. So it's those kinds of situations in which case you're saving tens of thousands of dollars by hooking up.
Yep, you're 100% right.
Possibility or probability of getting the hookup fee paid in subsequent projects? Were we just lucky on this one, or?
Getting the hookup fee, oh, it does depend. It does depend on the EJ score. It depends on whether or not this was in, for public health protection versus, and again, most everything we're looking at right now with the projects we've presented to you so far, and I think Councilman Ennis, the last time you were here, was the one we just gave our kind of full menu for the Sanitary District. Most every one of those, with the exception of the West Side Regional, because that's a much, much larger thing, and that's a decade down the road, they are in the interest of public health. Typically, when you do that, your ranking goes much higher. The state's willing to give you more on the front end.
Pretty good possibility, then.
Yes, and we're all, obviously, we would shoot for that, without a doubt.
Typical cause, if there is such a thing, is it, I'm hearing.
Well, now, Mr. Hastings was talking about replacement of a septic system in the estoppelage, but connection 10 to 15, depending on how far you are off the road, I've seen quite a bit. I've seen some as high as 20. The Bay Restoration Fund will pay up to $25,000. We don't want to see connection fees that high. That's astronomical.
That's a good idea.
Yes, James.
What is the process for, is it going, are those properties, will they be annexed?
So we've said this, and every time we've come in front of council for this particular discussion, those properties will not be annexed. It is only at the city's prerogative to do it, and if they wanted to, they would have to offer every other city service to annex them. That includes curbing, trash pickup, lighting, fire hydrants, the whole nine yards. Yeah. This agreement that the city made under this new name, I'm even forgetting what the name is now, versus Urban Service District, Out of Town Service District, whatever the case is, for a public health exemption, to protect public health, the city's willing to do it and connect without annexation. So that's always been a big selling point from the front, because we don't, you know, that's getting people to understand the need for a water sewer bill, that's one thing. Telling them you're going to be annexed, some people even have more heartburn over that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Adam.
Yep, sure.
And we get clean water out of all this, by the way.
True story.
Wycomico River will look nice again.
Maybe, hopefully.
Well, you know, every little bit helps. There's no doubt about it. You get more bang for your buck from an environmental protection standpoint with a, you know, fully upgraded wastewater treatment plant versus individual onsite sewage disposal. They do their job, but they're nowhere near as efficient.
First question I have, Pam. Glad you're here. When I see these type of numbers, the first thing I look for is, where is it in the budget? Where is it in the capital improvement program? And what I understand, and this is Hurley helping with this, that it is, it came out of the fiscal year 2025 budget.
So there's actually two pieces. So to do the full $600,000, there's $341,000 remaining from fiscal '25. It's in the capital project budget, thus it does not, it did not expire yesterday. It rolls, because the capital project funds roll year to year. They don't expire at June 30th like the operating budget.
So that was the $775,000. Are you saying some of that has rolled into '26?
So $341,000 has rolled into '26. You can't see that in munis yet if you pull up the project, because we actually have to physically roll munis, and that is during the audit process of.
341 that's left, because it was broken down into Mardele and Parsonsburg, and then a general water and sewer comprehensive plan update.
Those are other funds.
And Salisbury was only budgeted for $350,000 in 2025. So where are we with $600,000?
The rest of it is coming from fiscal year '26. We just put $850,000 in, and since today is the first year that the.
First day.
The first day of the fiscal year, it has not yet been loaded into the budget, into the capital budget. To ensure control over capital projects, we have implemented for the, since I've basically been in this role, we ask the departments, when you're ready for your funding, contact us, we'll load it. If this gets approved tonight, I will get an email tomorrow from Adam saying, please load the $850,000, and thus there will be sufficient funds for both, for the full $600,000.
And what about what we did for '25 for Mardele and Parsonsburg? Is that still, that's still in queue, right?
Yeah.
We're not taking from that at all?
No, no, those funds are spoken for, or those projects speak for their, you know, there's funds for each of those projects, yeah. We're not like dipping into one and the other, so. But because they're at different timelines, right, this one needs the most first.
That's very true, yeah.
And so the '26 funds were not allocated to a specific project, because we weren't sure what project would move forward fastest.
Right.
And thus, unlike '25 where we did allocate to individual projects, this time we did not. So the $850,000 is available in full.
So if they only need 600 and some thousand, why are you rolling over 850?
Well, 850 is from '26. That's not being rolled over. That's brand new.
I thought you said he was going to send you an email and said.
Well, I will load, I will load the 850, and so it'll be available for them for other projects then as well. I could also only load the amount that they need. But again, we typically, when we get notice that there is a project in place, we load the budgeted amount.
And it'll sit there and roll over into '27?
You know, if there is no additional projects in 2026, those remaining funds will roll into '27.
Yeah, which right now, unfortunately, we did hear back from the state today in that Pittsfield's wastewater treatment plant, SRF application, the reason we had held off on the Parsonsburg app, it did not get ranked as high enough as it needed to be for this year. So they're going to have to reapply next year. So we'll have to kind of put that one on the back burner for a little bit.
No questions? All good. All those in favor of Resolution 95-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 96-2025. This is confirming the appointment of David Ennis to the PAC 14, Inc., Board of Directors.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 96-2025?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Say.
Motion's carried. Resolution 96-2025 passes with a vote of five votes and one abstention.
Okay, next is Resolution Number 97-2025. This is appointing David Ennis as a voting member of the Tri-County Council for the Lower Shore of Maryland.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 97-2025?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Hurley, Mr. Ennis can vote for himself, can't he?
He should not.
He should not.
I don't know if I want to. If he can't vote for himself, why should Russ establish?
What are you, is that, are you suggesting we table this joke? Any other discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 97-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Do we have an abstention?
I voted aye.
Oh, you did? Okay, fine. Resolution 97-2025 passes unanimously.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Mr. Phil Tillman in the room, former president of Wycomico County Council. Glad to have you here. Good evening, Mr. Benson. How are you?
2025-10. This is a long read, so bear with me. It's an act to authorize and empower Wycomico County, Maryland to borrow on the faith and credit of Wycomico County, Maryland an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $17,766,000, and to evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county, the pros thereof to be used by Wycomico County to finance, refinance, or reimburse the cost of certain projects for the following departments: emergency services, public library, civic center, recreation parks, and solid waste, including costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction, improvement, installation, renovation, real rehabilitation, repairing, furnishing, and equipping of land, facilities, buildings, and structures, together with other costs and financing costs related thereto, as further described herein as附权, including a bond contingency. Authorizing the issuance and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation refunding bonds in order to currently refund or advance refund of any bonds issued pursuant to the authority of this act, provided the aggregate principal amount of each such series of refunding bonds does not exceed 130% of the aggregate principal amount of bonds refunded therefrom. Accepting all such bonds and refunding bonds from the provisions of Section 19-205 and 19-206 of Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, authorizing the issuance and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bond anticipation notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $17,766,000 prior to and anticipation of the sale of any bonds authorized hereby in order to finance, refinance, reimburse costs of such projects on interim basis, capitalize interest and financing costs. Authorizing the county council to pass resolutions prior to issuing, all are part of the bonds, refunding bonds, or bond anticipation notes in order to fix, prescribe, determine, or provide for the details of such obligations and the issuance and sale thereof, providing that all such bonds, refunding bonds, and bond anticipation notes shall be general obligation of the county, to which the faith and credit of the county are pledged, and authorizing annual appropriations to pay the principal of and interest on said obligations, and levying of taxes to meet said appropriations, subject to any lawful limitations on the county taxing power set forth in the charter. It's that taxing power may relate to such obligations, providing for the dispersment of the proceeds of the bonds, refunding bonds, or bond anticipation notes authorized hereby, providing certain rule of construction and the provisions of this act shall be liberally construed, providing that the provisions of this act shall be separable and generally relating to the issuance of sales such bonds, refunding bonds, or bond anticipation notes authorized hereby. This is an introduction of this bill. Mr. President.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Entertained a motion from council to introduce legislative bill number 10-2025. Second. Discussion. We'll give you the floor, Ms. Olin, if you'd like.
So this is starting our, Pamela Lynn, Finance Director, I don't think I introduced myself on the last one, sorry. This is starting the bonding process for fiscal '26, based on the capital improvement budget that has, was adopted by the council. I forgot to bring with me my dates, but these are approximate. Second reading of this with public hearing should be the first meeting in August. And then, if it passes at that date, the 60-day referendum period runs out, and on 10/7, council would be passing the resolution to allow us to do the bonding. And on 10/21, which is our daytime meeting, we would do that split session where council would, you know, meet at 10:00 a.m., and we would ask you to come back, hopefully by 2:00, for the awarding of the bonds. These, we will have two series, because we will have the enterprise fund, so they will be for-profit bonds, and then we will have the not-for-profit bonds for the other items in the listing. So the Pittsfield Tower, the library, the Civic Center elevator, recreation and parks, those items will be under the non-taxable amount, I believe. And then the solid waste will definitely be taxable based on the fact that it is an enterprise fund. The current plan is that we will go to New York to meet with the rating agencies in September as well, to make sure that our ratings hopefully stay at where they are. Since we did get an upgrade last year from actually two of the rating agencies, we will only be going to S&amp;P and Moody's, though. Fitch did upgrade our debt without seeing us. So that is the current timeline. Again, these projects were approved by council at the first meeting in June.
So we've, we're borrowing $17 million, right?
Yes.
What are we paying off? In other words, how much, are we going deeper in debt or are we getting ahead?
So I did not bring with me our total debt, but there, at this moment, because of interest rates, there's nothing that we're looking at refinancing at a lower interest rate than what we have for some of them. We have nothing that's coming. So I believe, based on my recollection, this will be increasing our overall debt. Now, the piece that doesn't count against our debt limit, which is the majority of this borrowing, is the solid waste.
How much, any idea of how much of an increase we're increasing our debt?
I mean, it's about $5 million, $4.5 million that we're doing in total for the non-taxable. So if we haven't paid all $4.5 million, and again, I did not bring that with me today. So.
For informational purposes, could you send that?
Yes.
Sometime. To Laura.
Yeah. We have not calculated those numbers. I will be actually working on those numbers during, so I will have a better answer in like August, because right now, I literally sent to Mrs. Hurley today the start of putting together what's called our preliminary offering statement, which is a book about this thick, double-sided, that has all kinds of information, and one of those pieces of information is our outstanding debt. I have not done that calculation. That'll probably be an August calculation, but as soon as I calculate it, I will gladly send it on.
So we are doing some refinancing to get lower interest rates?
No, at this moment, we're not planning on it, because there's no lower interest rates. There's no lower interest rates for any debt that is available to refinance.
All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill number 10-2025, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. The introduction of legislative bill number 10-2025 passes unanimously. Mrs. Hurley?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry.
The next item on the agenda is the introduction of legislative bill 2025-11. It is an emergency act to add new sections to the Wycomico County Code to codify operating days, hours, and locations of county sanitary landfill, convenience centers, and recycling centers, to require compliance by all commercial haulers, to add definitions to prohibit the unlawful disposal of solid waste originating outside of Wycomico County, and to provide penalties for violations. As it states, this is an emergency, it's being introduced as an emergency act. I think council is aware, but on June 3rd, there was a discussion from the county council by representatives from the executive department with regard to the landfill and hadn't tipping fees. During that discussion, there was no indication that there was going to be any changes made to the operation of the landfill. Council became aware on or about June 10th that there was a meeting with staff from the landfill and the executive's office with commercial haulers, indicating that there was an intent to start closing the landfill on certain days for commercial haulers. The operation of the landfill relates, and the disposal of solid waste relates to the safety and health of the county. And the council requested Ms. Hurley and I to draft an emergency act dealing with this, which is what this is. I would further add that yesterday, the county executive and her staff held a I would further add that yesterday, the county executive and her staff held a meeting with the press to discuss the landfill issues, and there were a couple of issues that I think council needs to be made aware of to make sure you understand. During that meeting, it was represented that, that Waukesha County has a refuse disposable permit with the Maryland Department of Environment, and that, and that that refuge permit related or had language in it that restricted Waukesha County's ability to take out-of-county solid waste. For the record, I have provided a copy of the refuge permit to the members of the county council, have reviewed the, that permit. There is not any express language in the permit that restricts Waukesha County from accepting out-of-county refuge or solid waste. In addition to that, I spoke to the chief of the Solid Waste Operations Lands and Material Administration of the Maryland Department of Environment, and expressly asked him whether there was any language in the refuge permit that restricted Waukesha County from accepting out-of-county solid waste, and he assured me that there was nothing in the permit that had to do with solid waste, out-of-county solid waste. In addition, there was a representation that Waukesha County has a 10-year comprehensive solid waste management plan, and that there was some language in that, in that plan that restricted out-of-county solid waste. I would simply note that in reviewing that solid wa, that, that solid waste plan, the, was presented to the council in January of 2025. If you review that plan, which is on the website for, for them, on what is labeled Roman numeral page IX, which is the introduction section, in the first paragraph, the county solid waste plan states, "The Newland Park landfill is adequate to meet the projected demands for the foreseeable future. However, the county should begin to explore the possibility of expanding into adjacent areas at the Newland Park site, or identify possible locations for a new facility." The relevance of that is that in January of this year, the executive and the landfill informed the county and the state that the Newland Park landfill was adequate, and there was no need to make modifications except to consider expanding it. So it was changed in the last six months, I'm not sure, but that's what they said in six months ago. They also said at that meeting that the solid waste plan had restrictions in it that relate to out-of-county solid waste. I would note that in reviewing this document, that there are, there are three sections that mention the term "out-of-county." There is a section in 3.55, which is, has to do with rubble recycling, that says no out-of-county waste rubble is accepted at the Newland Park landfill. On section 4.62, which also relates to rubble landfills, it again says no out-of-county waste rubble is accepted at the Newland Park landfill. And the third and last reference in this section has to do with section 5.210, which is construction and demolition debris, and again, it says no out-of-county waste rubble is accepted at the Newland Park landfill. The only reference in this plan that has to do with out-of-county has to do with waste rubbish. There's nothing else in there that relates to this situation. I would add that if you go on the county landfill website, there are general rules that relate to the issuance of residential permits. And on the first page, there is a, or, second page in the middle, and I know you can't see it, but I highlighted it for my benefit, there is an addition that's been added that says, as of February 2025, no out-of-county permits will be sold for residential land permits. The implication of that is that prior to February of 2025, the county was issuing out-of-county landfill permits to residents, for people located outside of Waukesha County. And I would just lastly note that in chapter 141 of the existing Waukesha County Code, which is up for the Department of Public Works, 141-4, under section A5, which is under solid waste division, the existing county code says under 5B that transfer station permits out-of-county will, will cost $90. So while the landfill may have decided in February 2025 to restrict the sale of out-of-county permits, the county code says that the county sells out-of-county code, or rubble, or landfill permits for $90. So if there's going to be a change to selling out-of-county permits, the code section needs to be modified. So we're here for introducing this emergency act.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Entertained a motion from council to introduce legislative bill number 11-2025. To move?
Second.
Second.
And discussion. I think for clarification for the public, I think we'd like to show the public exactly what it is that we're talking about. I have people that are calling me today, and they're, over the last week or so, asked me exactly what the details are with that. Not that many people are familiar with the exact timeline that's been proposed, so I thought maybe we'd put it on the screen so that the public has some idea of what's been proposed. The reason that tonight we want to take this action, to try to see what we can do to have a better, I think, maybe better control over what, what our destiny is going to be over the next few years at the landfill. There's a tonnage, what they call a tonnage inflow limitation strategy. Part of that is, as you can see on the screen, whereas Phase 1 suggests that August 1, that the Newland Park landfill won't accept commercial hauler waste on Saturdays at all. So they'll be eliminating the Saturday operations for commercial, for commercial haulers. There is a bit of a concern for that by the fact that, you know, if you have these people who are in this business, what are they going to do with their commercial waste on that Saturday? Or if they're taking a roof off of a house, how are they going to finish that job if they can't take the, the, the materials that they have? What are they going to do with it? So that's August 1, which is coming up faster than we, than we probably want to note. The second phase of the proposal is October 1, where it's being proposed that the Newland Park landfill will not accept commercial hauler waste on Saturdays and Mondays. So the concern we have there is that you have, you know, you have a commercial hauler that has a lot of refuse, or a lot of solid waste in their trucks. They have times that they are going to be picking up for their neighborhoods, no doubt, and I'm sure Saturdays and Mondays are on those lists. So if you're looking at six days of the week, and then immediately you've just told these haulers that there's two days where they effectively will not be able to operate, from, you know, from what our perspective might be, then we feel that there may be a problem with, with these concerns for the haulers, as well as other issues, where if they have to store the material in the back of their truck, is there going to be a leachate issue of that, of the solid waste materials leaking out of the truck? So that's another concern. Additional concern is the fact of, does this, does this really put extreme pressures on these companies, financial pressures on these companies, where all of a sudden, they possibly could have lost two days of revenue entirely, where it was, they used to operate six days a week, they may only operate four? Consider that in your business, if 30% of your business, the days that you operate are all of a sudden closed. And we're also not so sure as far as the employees, what, what do the employees do if we're closing the landfills on Saturdays and Mondays? So then we have Phase 3, which comes in, I believe that's in February, is it, of '26? Yes, February 1 of '26, it's recommending not to accept commercial hauler waste on Saturdays, Mondays, and then a third day to be determined. So it's rather extreme, we feel. We recognize this is a proposal, but we feel it's rather an extreme proposal. And the final phase of this talks about on July 1 of 2026, and it says potential, potential complete closure of the, for the commercial haulers at the landfill. There's a bit of an asterisk involved with that, whereas it's been suggested that the commercial haulers who are working with the municipalities would be exempt from all of this. The concern on the part of the council is, what about the county council, I mean, excuse me, what about the county residents who don't have municipal service? I mean, it, we're, we seem, it seems as if we may be abandoning, abandoning those citizens that live in the county, the rural county areas. So that's, that we feel is a concern, too. So as a result, with, with this, I guess this, but it was a bit of a surprise to see this come forward. We felt that what the council needed to do was to initiate some type of emergency legislation, whereby the emergency legislation is very simple. It just says that the county council will be determining the closures of the landfill, or the operating hours of the landfill, and the operating days of the landfill, and that's the basis of this, so that we can try to reel this back in and hopefully get the, I guess you'd say, put the toothpaste back in the tube, for, for lack of better analogies, but that's the purpose of this legislative bill tonight, so.
John, you missed one.
What did I miss?
There was a handout given to the council, June, June 3, and it mentioned restricted days, but it also said closing of convenience centers on this handout, and.
I didn't miss that.
Yeah. You know, a lot of people in the rural areas of the county use these convenience centers, and the threat of closing those convenience centers, if you, I love watching the History Channel, and sometimes you run across things that, you know, relate to what we're doing up here, and I was watching something a few weeks ago where the trash haulers in New York City went on strike. And within a few days, the streets were piled up. You can only imagine what would happen in this county if this was, if these actions went through that the executive's office tried to do. So, you know, I support this, you know, we've got to work it out. And I do also say that we should not be taking trash from other counties. I agree, I agree with that.
True. Anyway, I, you know, I understand. And I think also you have to wonder something, and I get, it's hard to do, to really realize that there's, there's also been recommendations of increasing rates and like that, if you're, if out-of-county solid waste is coming into county, will there be a surcharge? We, we sort of put this in here, we'll have to review it more carefully, we'll do an introduction tonight, we'll have a work session in about two weeks. But, you know, that's something else that we, you know, want to be mindful of, of how that's going to play out as well. If you're attempting to reduce the amount of flow into the landfill, you have to wonder, you have to ask yourself, okay, if you're closing it on Saturday, it's still going to show up on Monday. And if you close it on Saturday and Monday, there's a good percent, good chance that a large percentage of that's going to be coming in on Tuesday, because it has to go somewhere. And I don't think, for what it might cost, they're not going to truck it over to Somerset County. We wouldn't want them to truck it over to Somerset County, and we wouldn't want them to truck it over to, to Worcester County. So anyway, that's the most, I have any other discussion?
I just want to say that if you can't take it to the landfill, if the haulers can't take it to the landfill on Saturday or Monday, the people who they collect, why would I collect the trash if I can't dispose of it? See, why would you, why would I, if I, if I have a hauler, and he says, well, I can't pick up your trash because I can't dispose of it? And then I look at also, we have Bruce Robertson, who's talking about trash, picking up trash on the roads and things. Now, what's going to happen? People going to throw, if they don't have a way to get rid of it, they're going to throw it in, you know, on the road, or down the back street, and we're just going to have a, that is going to be a health issue that we have trash, and just like Joe said, I was thinking about New York, too. And I think that this is going to create a problem, a serious problem, and it's going to be a health issue, because you're going to have trash piled up in the yards and all that kind of stuff, because they can't dispose of the trash. And I think we do need to study this, and I understand where they, they're coming from, from one point, but I think what we need to do is fast-forward getting the cell put in, the new cell put in, to make, remedy that problem.
James?
Yeah.
I would just like to say that I, I, I was not aware of this legislation being put forward, and I appreciate the hastening of getting this legislation put forward, but when you mentioned the council suggested it, I had no knowledge of it. Not that I'm against getting legislation to work with our landfills, to protect our, our natural resource, but I would like, I would really appreciate it if the council would, you know, include the rest of the council when creating legislation, especially if taxpayers are paying for it. This happened with the, the contract legislation last time, I wasn't aware of that. And then now, this legislation, this is becoming a reoccurring event, and, you know, I, I would have appreciated to see this in a work session, so that we can work with our county body to create the best legislation the first time, instead of creating introduction to legislation, and then have to go back and cut it all up. We should be doing it in a work session.
Yeah, and I apologize for that, James. I mean, I, you know, I contact as many council members as I think, you know, who, who may call me and may have questions. The reason for this reversal process is, is very simple, is the fact that it has to be emergency legislation, and our timeline is very difficult right now. We're looking at probably worst-case scenario that depending on a veto or not, that it'll be September 2 until we can even implement it. So that's the reason for it being reversed. Normally we would, you're right, we would have the work session ahead of time.
I think it's important to note that we, we were not aware of the potential plan to close the landfill either.
Right, that's operational. Can you guys talk?
Yes.
Bunkie Lufman, Director of Administration.
Adam Corey, Acting Landfill Superintendent.
And Andrew Illumini, Department of Law.
And I think one of the issues is that there is a failure to understand the timeline of this situation, as, as Mr. Benson alluded to, because, you know, his comments obviously showed that he didn't understand the timeline of when this became a concern. So Andrew has put together a timeline with solid waste input, my input, and he's going to read through a timeline, which I believe will answer a majority of the questions.
Ask a question, what is the timeline's relevance to the actual body of the text in this legislative bill?
It is absolutely relevant because, as you saw with July of next year, we are potentially facing an inoperable landfill, 100% inoperable. Not convenience centers, not being able to accept anything, that there would be a budget line item in the fiscal year '27 budget where we are paying to take the convenience center location trash out of county. So that's why this is so imperative. This is not about, there's a larger policy discussion on out-of-county waste. I think there seems to be conflict with what's being introduced, with what council members have said in being in favor of out-of-county waste. We also have an issue because of our proximity to Delaware, and to a lesser degree, Virginia, of out-of-state waste coming into the landfill. But the bigger number is, truthfully, the apocalypse that the county is facing. So in June of 2023, the capacity analysis by the county's expert, not employee, but contracted expert, was that there was 2.5 million cubic yards, or 39% capacity remaining. At that time, the annual consumption was 272,000 cubic yards per year, according to the outside consultant. So the focus of the development of the landfill was on future sales and acquiring property adjacent to the landfill to support the construction of future cells. Further, the fiscal year '25 proposed tipping rate increase was premised on the landfill being fiscally solvent and extending capacity until the completion of the new cell. In October of 2024, the Acting Landfill Superintendent started the process of bringing the landfill out of non-compliance. So if you may recall, there was an issue with the contractor, who was not only overseeing the landfill, but constructing the ongoing cells. Then we brought Adam on, he's the Acting Landfill Superintendent, he brought the county out of non-compliance. There were multiple issues with the operation of the landfill, not the accepting, but the actual management of where the waste was going.
And. Illumini, if I could, I mean, we appreciate all this, but the issue at hand right now is the fact that the council has concerns over the, the proposal to make the closures. These conversations would have been very nice to have had a month ago before the proposals to close the landfill were just simply mandated to the haulers, without any public input, without any council input. So we would have appreciated, this is very valuable information, but I think what the council wants to do right now is to come to a consensus on this legislation, to see whether or not we want to move this forward, because I think the idea, again, is not so much the dynamics of the timelines or anything else, but just whether or not the council feels as if we should have greater control over the closures, and the time, and the hours of the, of the landfill. That's really the, the issue right now.
Okay, so we have to put that into two separate categories. There's the. There's the actual operation of the landfill. That is controlled by the state permit. State permit outlines when the county, where the landfill operates, Newland Park, that's the landfill. The convenience centers are separate, and the hours of operation are set by the permit. Allowing commercial haulers, that's a separate subcategory of individuals that utilize the landfill and not the convenience centers. So this all goes back to this issue. So in October of 2024, the process of bringing the landfill out of compliance occurred. That took six months. Fast forward to May of '25, there's multiple administrative matters that co-occur. There's an aerial survey of the landfill resulting in the conclusion that there's 12 to 14 months of capacity remaining. This is in March of '25. That gets coupled with setting the tipping fees for fiscal year '26 as the budget's prepared, and then the completion of the geotech study so that plans for Cell 7, that's the next cell, can be reviewed by the state.
Right, and again, I want to cut you off because we appreciate that, and we would very much like to have this information, if you don't mind, through a PDF or through some type of, we'd like to be able to review this as opposed to trying to evaluate it here at the table today. We'll have a work session in two weeks where we can certainly invite you and have you come in to explain all this to us. But I think it would be more beneficial and would better use of the council's time if we had the opportunity to read it before you, you know, dictate exactly what the parameters are, if you don't mind.
This isn't parameter, this is a, this is a timeline leading us up to today.
Understood.
But Mr. Benson put out a timeline.
Can I interrupt for just a second?
And we are attempting to fulfill the timeline. I'm not saying he made an error, I'm saying we're trying to show the whole timeline that got us.
We understand that, we appreciate it, but we know very clearly that whatever evaluation or whatever opinion that Mr. Illuminati might have, Mr. Benson has also researched this. Mr. Benson?
This isn't my opinion, this is.
It's your opinion of what's been stated, I understand.
I'm not saying it's not accurate. My problem is that the county developed a solid waste plan, submitted it to this council, and submitted, I assume, to the state. And it says the Newland Park landfill is adequate to meet the proposal.
In January.
And in January.
And then we got the aerial in March.
He's talking about a plan that came out in October of 2023, and again, in October of 2024. So three months or a year and three months before they submitted this plan, he's now saying they knew that the Newland Park landfill was not adequate, but they told the council and they told the state it was.
Mr. Council President.
I'll just say one more comment, but I do want to move on and get.
Certainly, understood, and I appreciate that. And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to do so. What Bunky just stated in that data that was presented to the county on what life this county had in its landfill was inaccurate, completely inaccurate. That county and this administration and the people that were working at that landfill and that are still working at that landfill were under the assumption they had that life left. When I came in to do aerial surveys, we don't have it. Now, I'll remind the council that on May 22nd, we've had work sessions, we've talked, and we've had council members state, you need to have a hard, down, dirty conversation with haulers about diverting trash. That was, those comments made on June 3rd. So we're trying to do something. But just like I said in the press conference the other day, we've got to stop accepting other people's trash. And codifying the allowance of people's trash in this legislation is bad for our county.
Understood, and that's why we will have a work session.
Yeah, glad to hear that.
That may be something that stays, that may be something that goes, but I appreciate your comments on that.
Needs to go.
You're not wrong.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. President.
It has to be, it has to be codified, because the only way you can restrict it is through the county code, not by edict from the landfill.
I totally agree, it needs to be codified.
Really quick, just as a, as we go into the work session in two weeks. There's two very large concepts, which I think both the executive and the legislative branch agree on, that out of county waste, whether with a surcharge or not, at this time, without the completion of Cell 7, is not tenable. There are 230,000 cubic yards of space remaining without limiting incoming waste solely to Wycomico County residents, just Wycomico County residents. No out of county, no out of state, surcharge, no surcharge. There's 11 months until the landfill, at the current burn rate that Adam has recalculated, we're 11 months out without any changes. So I think that if there was the vote to introduce with an amendment to strike 15616, the tipping fee for out of county solid waste in full, that there is no need to go to the phased closure at all. Because a limit, we know how much out of county waste comes in based on metrics.
All right, well, I appreciate that too, and of course, I understand that 100%. This was sort of, this was sort of the process, that we didn't want to leave anything out, knowing full well that we will have a work session to go through this, as well as another opportunity when we actually vote on the legislative bill. Probably, I guess it's going to come down sometime in, in, about September, August, about August. So we recognize that, we appreciate it. But we would also appreciate the fact of you to get this information to us so that we can be very prepared to have a viable discussion on it in two weeks.
Absolutely.
No?
No.
Okay.
I mean, is there a consensus to move forward with striking 15616 out of county solid waste?
Again, I would rather, I would rather have that discussion, I would rather have the discussion in a work session and make that amendment when we actually, instead of making these amendments during the introduction, I would much rather make the introduction, the amendments on, when we do the final passage of the bill.
I guess, the only from legal's point of view, because 15616 charges the law department with actually going through the trash, looking through the manifest, there's, I have a significantly different suggested rewrite, because Adam and I were working with the state to develop that we are going to record for work session on the 15th, that if we're going to regulate out of county waste, then there's a completely different set of metrics that need to be written into the code versus if we're going to completely take the stand that until Cell 7 is constructed, we cannot accept out of county waste, then that is two completely different pieces of legal work that need to be done. So that's why I'm requesting to look for that consensus at this.
We'll certainly have Mr. Benson meet with you to go over some of those details as well. Any other questions from the council? Yes, Josh?
Just to ask the question on whether or not, so this is emergency legislation compared to standard legislation. I don't know if the, if the executive branch is not moving forward with a policy, I don't know if we're, you know, if everyone's on board that we are going to be banning, you know, no more foreign trash coming into Wycomico County, then that's, that's substantial. We're all on the same page. So as far as process wise, I don't know if that makes a difference, Mr. President, I'm just bringing that up. But one way or another, it sounds like we're all on the same page in that sense, and I look forward to talking through it. But yeah, I don't know if they did anything that they wanted to add from the executive branch on that.
Like Andrew said, if there, if we eliminate out of county trash, there's no reason to go to the phased approach. I mean, you know, once, they're not the same, but, you know, it achieves the same type of goal we were going after.
Let me go back on something here. A few years ago, I guess it's a matter, and this is no disregard to anybody, sometimes I think it's a matter of trust. We had a town hall meeting in Mount Herman Church about the closing of the south end of Wallston Switch Road. A lot of citizens showed up, the county administrator showed up and made the comment that before we close that road, we will have another meeting, so the citizens will know. Well, guess what? The next day, the road got closed. Previous county executive now, not, not ours. So this council sits here as a buffer, to some extent, between county executive's office and the operations of Wycomico County and the citizens. I fully agree that we need to limit or cut out all the waste coming out of any other jurisdiction, Worcester, Delaware, Somerset, wherever it's coming from. And even after we get, what is it, Cell 7?
Correct.
Okay, because this problem ain't going to go away. We keep, we keep producing more trash. And it was interesting, we had a meeting last week with Mako, some of the Mako representatives, President of Mako, I think he's from Queen Anne's County, said they had 39 years left in their, in their landfill, you know. How lucky could they get, right?
Regional landfill.
Yeah.
Regional landfill.
So anyway, but like John said, we need to codify these, you know, when you start getting calls from customers, it's hard to believe how many people do watch PAC 14. You don't think many people watch it, but then when something like this comes up, what do you mean they're going to close the landfill? What do you mean they're going to take away the convenience centers? When you start getting calls from citizens about that, we have to act.
Really quick, that's an absolutely fantastic point. The convenience centers were never going to close, but.
The threat was, the threat was there.
The PowerPoint that was shared with the haulers, I don't know where that.
There it is. Closing of the convenience centers. And it was handed out by the administration.
That, again. So this is also a problem that Harford County and Baltimore County face. So Harford County, Baltimore County was accepting Harford County trash at $72 a ton. They had to increase it to $117 a ton. They did a multi-year Office of Inspector General study because all of a sudden, when that rate increase doubled, went to $45 more, all of a sudden, all the trash that was coming from Harford County became Baltimore County trash. So that's what my concern is about the larger part of inspecting, like Baltimore County, a large with three landfills, did a multi-year study to come up with the conclusion of which haulers were dumping, it was like, we do not have the ability to implement that. And so from a larger, broader perspective, if it takes Baltimore County three years from when they suspect the change is occurring and the fraud's occurring to come out in March of '25 with their study, Wycomico County can't do that. And so, again, from an operational standpoint, as Councilman Holloway recognizes, we cannot accept out of county, we cannot accept out of state. At this time, long term as well, but a bigger discussion once Cell 7 is operational.
Right, and a proposal that could have been put before the council probably a month ago when we discussed rates, I understand that. Any, anyone else?
One more thing to say, I don't know if you do a study on how many houses are being built in Wycomico County. Like if you look at Pemberton, all those homes, and they're going to have trash.
Sure.
So we talk about Cell 7, I would be working on Cell 8 or 9, whatever number you want to give it. I would be thinking about.
Certainly. I'd like, I'd like to give an answer to that, and I appreciate those comments. When you do your comprehensive plan, in our, in our 10-year comprehensive solid waste management plan that was adopted by the council and submitted and approved by the department, and Section 5.2 does state we're accepting in-county sources only, the reason you do that is you say, I'm not planning on taking anything else. We should plan for housing booms in Wycomico, we should plan for student populations in Wycomico. My name is Salisbury University, the population's gone down a little bit with residences, but you want to take our county's trash into account as you plan your next 10-year approach. All right. With that being said, we should not be planning on Sussex County's growth, Worcester County's growth, or the profit margins of a hauler that's taking advantage of our low tipping fees and our centrally located landfill. We should take Wycomico County residents' trash and businesses' trash only, full stop. Now, Cell 7, again, we're fast-tracking that, all right? Cell 7 is the same size effectively as Cell 8. So unless we do something now, we're not going to have any room, even if we build Cell 7, which we are. But I'm saying, it's going to fill up just as fast as Cell 8 did if we don't do something about our trash diversion. As soon as Cell 7 groundbreaking begins, and I mean it, I've got surveyors, as soon as we get the first frost, surveyors are going in across the road and they're going to start surveying those parcels of land for expansion. As soon as Cell 7 groundbreaking occurs, then we need to go across the road with deforestation, wetlands mitigation, and building the other cells that we need across the road, for sure.
When we meet in two weeks, could you do us a favor and give us an overview? I think we asked you.
You did. I just, there wasn't, there wasn't time to prepare that.
We recognize that, so in the two weeks, to give us an overview. The public, I think, needs to see this. The public has no idea what a Cell 3, 5.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they have no idea.
Exactly.
If we could put it on the screen, then we could see how the progress, the timelines and the progression that Mr. Illuminati was referring to.
President, I apologize, but just, just to be clear, under 156.3 of this amended, this legislation, in D, it says, notwithstanding anything to the contrary above, no solid waste collected from any commercial or industrial business, including construction or demolition materials, that originates from outside the geographic boundaries of Wycomico County shall be disposed of the Wycomico County Solid Waste Facility. In Section B, it does talk about a surcharge, and you may want to change that, and that's not my call, but the explanation I was given was that, you know, a commercial hauler who goes to Willards and picks up trash, and Willards picks up 600 trash from 600 residences, they may collect 560 of them from Wycomico County, but they may go into Worcester County for 50, and it's, it's next to impossible for them not to do that. So the point here is that that's what's supposed to be done with a surcharge, is not to allow everybody to bring in, and maybe there's a better way to word it, or, but if you're going to simply terminate all commercial haulers in areas like Willards, Eden, for instance, Eden is in Wycomico, Worcester and Somerset County, I can tell you that if I went to Eden right now and started driving the roads, I wouldn't know what county I was in. And I don't, I would suggest that almost nobody in this room would know what county they were in at any given time, and wouldn't know where they were picking the trash up. And, you know, there is a provision in here about requiring the manifest to be given, whether it goes to the law department or whoever, to try to determine where this out-of-county trash is coming from. There may be better solutions, the council recognized that there's a problem that needs to be addressed, and there may be ways to better phrase it in here, but the intent is not, this is restricting out-of-county waste, it's not permitting any, any additional county waste. And the only reason for the surcharge at all is to address this anomaly where you have somebody theoretically who's, who's on the, a county line or a state line, and they, they pick up a track, you know, one or two pieces of trash from another residence, but they can't pick up commercial, this eliminates all commercial out-of-county trash.
Construction and demolition, understood.
President Cannon, one thing to that, and I appreciate those comments, Mr. Benson. When you see two in tandem trucks come with full loads at 15 and 17 and a half tons respectively of municipal solid waste, that means residential side pickup, curb side pickup, from strictly Worcester County. That's the kind of issue we're talking about. That's 15 tons and 17 and a half tons that will never be able to be used by a resident of our county because somebody else has already taken that space up. That's the kind of stuff we got to stop.
The only point I would make is that this also has penalties, and if that's, if they are caught doing that, and they are caught more than once, they can be, their, their ability to dispose of any, and usually Wycomico County landfill at all under this legislation would be prohibited. So, you know, there, it seems to me that there has to be a penalty provision that goes along with this, and that's what this tries to do, is to address the violation. I mean, I understand it's not going to be easy. I don't profess to understand how you can tell where an individual piece of trash comes from, but.
Thanks for assigning a toss.
You're welcome.
Well, just so we're clear about that, the, the commercial haulers believe that that information is proprietary information, and they don't want it shared with their competitors.
That's respectfully a problem, because they, their branded cans are outside every residence. I can tell you where every single hauler, whose client they are, in Wycomico County, Worcester County, Somerset County, because their branded dumpster is outside of the residence. We know exactly where they are. That is not proprietary information. Proprietary confidential information is a term that, an industry secret is explicitly identified in state and federal law. This is not a trade secret, this is abandoned property that is on the side of the road that is flagged with the hauler's branded information.
We're not interested in the black and white legal premise for this. We are trying to work with these haulers so that they don't find themselves in a difficult position where they could lose their entire clientele to a larger commercial hauler, and we have to take their advice because we're not going to pass legislation unless we've talked to the haulers and we know exactly what their circumstances are. And I don't want to revisit it again. I appreciate the clarification, Mr. Benson, and the information that you might have to help, help us with that in helping determine this, you know, this entire complex arrangement, it would be very helpful, okay? Certainly, and I'm sure Mr. Benson will be glad to meet with you. All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill number 11, 2025, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion's carried, legislative bill.
You probably need to do this by.
We don't have to do an introduction by roll call.
Not the introduction, it's just the.
Thank you, Mr. Benson, we appreciate it.
And you're going to have to ultimately pass this with five votes.
Understood. The introduction of legislative bill number 11, 2025 passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Hi, my name's Joe White, Wycomico County. Before I get into the, the main part of what I want to talk about, I, I do see on the work, open work session later, you have accepting a land donation from the Hebron Lions Club with the Parks and Rec. Actually, I started coming here several years ago because I'm, I'm a, I'm a volunteer for, not just in Wycomico County Parks and Rec, but outside of that, Pittsville as well. I, I really hope that you are able to get this done. I know Director Steve Miller's put a lot of work in, and Councilman James Nguyen has done a nice job of, of getting this conversation going. But if you ride by the Hebron's Lion Club field right now, where I'm about to start soccer practice in two weeks, the grass hasn't been cut probably since the spring. So it's basically a park that can't be used right this second. Talk about something completely different. You know, here tonight to support you all with the emergency legislation, at least reviewing it. Obviously, you have several work sessions, and you have a public hearing that needs to happen. I think the problem here is, and I've talked about this before, is when you have very last-minute issues, and just a couple of them, just to bring up, is the funding of Fruitland Primary, the, the negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, the COLA, some of the information that was held back from the actuarial data. The liquor bills, just six months ago, to me, that was kind of a certifiable debacle in many ways. Some of that had to be rescinded later. The kennel legislation just didn't go very well. It's, it's not good when you have to do things last minute, but I don't think you're having a choice. And the, and the, and the reason is, is this bait and switch stuff, okay? So the county executive just five weeks ago admitted on another show that she did a bait and switch over the revenue cap. Now, this revenue cap was put in by people who signed petition to put it on a referendum, passed it. It is really not a political football. Anybody who thinks they're conservative and wants to get rid of the revenue cap, I question you. I, I do openly. But when you look at things like Sharp's Point, Fruitland Primary, these are, these are items that came to you all last minute and needed to be approved the next day. The first funding for Sharp's Point, you needed an answer that day for the next day for two-point-three million dollars. Let's talk about that Hebron Field for a second. Give me twenty-three thousand dollars, and let me show you how many kids in soccer uniforms and soccer balls I can buy. But then we came back and needed another seven-point-five million dollars, and we couldn't even wait to November for the bond market. Again, a bait and switch, things were moved out of, out of capitalization in Topego just because. This is really terrible planning. This landfill, we do need a bigger picture drawn, but you need to protect the, the, the citizens of Wycomico County now, and you need to get this done. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Hi, my name is James Dahlien from Wycomico County. I just wanted to make a few comments on this landfill thing. I've been in attendance to the workshops that Solid Waste has put on, one in November twenty-twenty-four, another March of this year, and I believe I attended another open work session they had in this, one of these sessions. So I found it really odd watching that press release or press conference that the executive had yesterday. It seemed really misleading, a lot of the statements there, you know, the, the ten-year plan they submitted, you know, said the landfill was operational for the foreseeable future. I had no indication during any of those workshops or open work sessions that there was some pressing dire need that we were running out of space so fast. It was not a topic of discussion, really. So I commend the council for keeping the landfill open. Also, I heavily participate in a lot of volunteer litter cleanups, and, you know, hope, I think keeping the landfill open, you know, will help keep trash off the, the sides of the road. And separately from this, I look forward to the upcoming work session tonight with Steve Miller from Parks and Rec. I support the acquisition of that land, and thank you.
Mr. Dahlien.
Mikel Dahlien, and I absolutely a hundred percent agree with my husband. I did attend all the workshops with Solid Waste, and we did find them very informative, and we were glad that, you know, we could participate, but this did really feel like it came as a big shock and a surprise. It did not feel like something that was brought into attention or focus for the citizens that were there. Shifting my focus, there's an open work session tonight regarding the donation of land from the Hebron Lions Club to Wycomico County for use as a recreational park. This session is very timely, as we just heard a proclamation earlier this evening naming July National Parks and Recreation Month. And I want to take a moment to share my appreciation for Director Steve Miller and his entire department for the amazing work that they do to provide the citizens of Wycomico County with quality parks and recreational programming. Our kids use them a lot. Their efforts are integral to the health and well-being of our communities, and we are blessed to have them. I would also like to share my deep appreciation for the work that Councilman James Nguyen and Director Steve Miller have done around this proposed donation from the Lions Club in Hebron. The fate of the two proposed parks, Conley Mill and West Metro Core, have been intertwined for nearly a decade, and along with them, the promises made to both areas of the county. Councilman Nguyen and Director Miller have been immensely resourceful in seeking a common sense solution to the situation that would serve the diverse needs of Wycomico County residents and honor all of the promises that have been made. Councilman Nguyen held a town hall in Hebron on March fifth, twenty-twenty-five, which we attended, in which he gathered the thoughts and perspectives of the community surrounding the proposed West Metro Core Park. In this meeting, the consensus was that residents would prefer West Metro Core to remain undeveloped and county support for the Lion Club Park in Hebron instead. The solution would allow for revitalization of the existing park while alleviating the huge expenses associated with the creation of a brand-new park and the disruption it could bring to the surrounding neighborhood. The donation of the park from Hebron's Lion Club ensures that residents will have their recreational needs met in a way that is fiscally responsible while preserving and enhancing a tremendous community asset. Residents also voiced their approval of moving the program open space designation from West Metro Core to Conley Mill as originally proposed, thereby freeing the West Metro Core property for other, more suitable community uses. The county executive attended this meeting and seemed to be in favor of this solution as well. Moving this designation makes it, in many ways, Conley Mill Park is proposed to be left in a mostly-natural state, requiring very little money to bring to fruition, whereas West Metro Core was slated for costly sports fields that would require millions of dollars to establish. Conley Mill Park also has unique topographical features, such as some of the highest elevations in the county and three creeks which form the watershed of the Wycomico River, sitting atop the Paleo Channel. The conversion of program open space designation from West Metro Core to Conley Mill will work to protect these vital natural resources. Establishing Conley Mill Park as a regional park will also work to support, strengthen, and develop our local economy. This plan was good when it was made by the previous executive and council in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and it remains a solid way to move Wycomico forward today. I encourage each of you to support the good work that's been done and move this proposal forward. By doing so, we can create a legacy together that will benefit the residents of Wycomico for generations to come.
Thank you, Mr. Dahlien.
Mike Goldberg, Wycomico County. The county executive's proposal to close the landfill to out-of-county trash, I believe, is prudent and necessary. But this wasn't put on the table, to the best of my knowledge, until yesterday. Instead, what she proposed was a phased-out closure of the landfill, which simply is not a practicable or logical solution. There's a few more things. In the press conference yesterday, it wasn't until the press conference that the executive revealed her intention to close the landfill to all out-of-county trash. The council apparently was not previously advised of this intention. It was not until the press conference that anyone outside of the executive branch had heard about this. Prohibiting dumping of out-of-county trash was apparently not proposed by the executive at the June third, twenty-twenty-five budget meeting. That discussion was limited to raising commercial tipping fees. That's important. It's a disincentive for out-of-county trash to be dumped, but that's not what the, you know, what that meeting was about. Furthermore, the executive branch held a meeting with the commercial haulers on June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at which time a plan was presented to them. But the executive did not inform the council, it has been reported to me, or provide the council with this plan. The plan addressed a phased-out closure of the landfill to commercial haulers on certain days, culminating with complete closure as of July first, twenty-twenty-six, one year from today, but did not include any prohibition on accepting out-of-county trash. The problems with the eventual closing of the landfill to haulers should be evident to everyone. It was the commercial haulers that made the council aware of the plan, of the, of the executive's plan, not the executive. Upon being advised by the haulers, the council attempted to contact the Director of Administration, Bunky Lufman, by email to inquire about the plan. This has been reported to me. To date, the council has received no response from Mr. Lufman. As such, the council found it, obviously found it necessary to quickly respond to the crisis after their inquiry was ignored. So they drafted the emergency legislation when it became apparent that the executive was intentionally failing to inform them. Thus, it seems that the executive's failure to communicate with the council is what precipitated the need for this proposed legislation. I think it's a good plan, but not perfect, and I do agree with the executive that out-of-county trash should be banned from the landfill to preserve the limited remaining space, but I find it alarming that the executive continues to operate in secrecy without informing or working with the council to address what she herself described as a crisis. If there is indeed a crisis, then it is unconscionable that the executive failed to inform the council and work cooperatively with them to draft the necessary legislation. This is deception, not leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Good evening, Robert Taylor, Wycomico County. I think the landfill situation is interesting, but I'm not going to get in it tonight, except to say that the old DeShiel landfill out on the west side may still be available. Many years ago, I was involved in the litigation where the county shut that down on the losing side, I'll tell you, but it may still be there, might be usable. But I do want to point out, the landfill does epitomize what the executive's branch can do screwed up. And I point that out because I want to change the subject and the focus to the sanitary district. Now, it's been two years since you got your litigate, your legislation to pass it. You haven't done anything with it. There's a vacuum. She's filling it, and she's misleading you. I heard them say that there's going to be the litigation, pardon me, the legislation's going to come back to form it. What you all looked at in December is screwed up. It doesn't agree with the state regulation of landfills. I've sent you information on this in the last week or so, and I would strongly recommend that you ask Mr. Benson to draft something for you all to form the sanitary district. Just to point a couple of things out, under the state legislation, the executive does not nominate the members of the commission. You all select them. And you do that by filing articles in incorporation. That's how it's formed, as a separate, independent legal entity. It's not part of the county government. It's separate, just like in Somerset County where they've had one for years. And in that, the, as I say, they have separate commissioners that are appointed essentially by this council. Executive doesn't have anything to do with it, and you can form it by either an ordinance or a resolution. So essentially, it's veto-proof, because you can do it by resolution. It's probably veto-proof as an ordinance because that's under state law. But you don't have to go there. You don't have to get into that legal cesspool. Just use a resolution. It can be done very quickly, and that's the way it should be done, and you should throw out anything they're going to bring you that's to the contrary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. I'm not going to draw on the landfill very long, but I, I do have a question. I don't expect it to be answered, but if we are going to limit and prohibit out-of-county people from dumping it to landfill, why, when you receive your application for your vehicle sticker, does it say that if you live within two miles of the county line, you're able to get a county sticker? Is that road mileage, or is that as the bird flies? And it makes a difference, because if it's that, as the bird flies, if you take BiValve, Maradella Convenience Centers, two miles as the bird flies, will get you in Dorchester County. So just something to look at, something to think about, okay? Why are we doing that when we're saying we're not going to? Six weeks ago, the council brought up concerns from the public about ethics complaints and forms. Finally, yesterday, there was an ethics forum and an easy way to get to it on the website. Okay, thank you for that, but I'm not satisfied with that. We're in the twenty-first century, folks. We just did the budget. We gave the IT department a larger increase than a lot of other departments because of their knowledge that they need. Why do we have to go online, print out a form, fill it out, scan it to get it back on the computer so we can send it in with no receipt that it was ever received? Or if you want to know if it was received, send it certified mail. Where are we at, guys, gals, peoples? It's twenty-first century. You should be able to fill the form out online. You should be able to hit submit. It should go to who it needs to go to, and you then have a receipt that your ethics complaint was sent in and received. So maybe the council can get the IT department to, to come up to the twenty-first century, and let's get out of the mail business. Okay, we can do that. And the only other thing, real quick, the executive spoke yesterday several times about only being in office two and a half years and the landfill problem. But I believe in the legislation that you're all considering for contractual positions. One of the people that has been assigned to work on the landfill was a Director of Administration for many years for this county, and now he's the consultant. Shouldn't he know about this too? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Good evening, Jovanosa Salisbury. I like the village people, but with civics. First off, I'm going to stroke two people's egos on this again. Mr. Miller, I just wanted to say, this was my first year in being able to work with the Challenger League, and it was phenomenal. You know, as a dad of a special needs kid, it's such a wonderful thing to be able to participate in that, get volunteers. I had students come. It's such a wonderful thing that we have, and I don't think, and I think people don't realize what a treasure it is in, in the county, and I, and I really hope we continue to advertise that, maybe expand it to some extent in the future if possible, but it's just a very beautiful program. So I want to thank you and Mr. Brian Workman for bringing us in and sort of making that such a wonderful, wonderful program. Also, Mr. Benson, I have to say, I, I really enjoyed your legal analysis earlier. I think you did to the executive office what every other major league team is doing to the Colorado Rockies this year. And you can look at their stats to figure out what that means. Now, I want to just very briefly touch on some of these points about the issues with the landfill. I'm not going to go into all the facts that were stated. And I appreciate that Mr. Corey and Mr. Lufman and Mr. Illuminati had to come up here and fall on their swords for the executive once again. Unfortunately, that's, that's their job. But as many people have said, this really boils down to the simple fact that Julie Giudano screwed the pooch again on the schedule. She literally stated in her comments, right, that she did not want to address to the public the, the crisis until it was a crisis. As several people have said, the point of government is to prevent a crisis from happening, yet we seem to have an executive office that sort of excels in that and only doing that. Everything that Mr. White mentioned earlier regarding all of these last-minute emergency appeals for money or support is part of a pattern, and it's a pattern of just incredible incompetence, if not malfeasance. And, and I've said this earlier on our show on Open Agenda, but of all the crises, this landfill is, in so many ways, the epitome of the problem. It's not just that it's a metaphor for the piling up of garbage and problems, right? But ultimately, let's think about this. The landfill is simultaneously an environmental, a financial, and a logistical crisis, and it's happening all at the same it's happening all at the same time. And yes, I concur that there are new surveys, there's new data that is brought up to educate and revise concerns about the life of the landfill. But when the executive was not that long ago proudly saying that the landfill has 20 years, and now we're finding out that it's sort of in stage four cancer and we have to get it done within 11 months, I think that speaks to a bigger problem of just complete incompetence and a lack of, again, transparency. So I commend you for the emergency legislation. I hope in the future that even though this is going to create a problem for the next month and that gap between when it's hopefully passed and when it sort of is activated, that it's not too bad. But this needs to be done, and thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Van Hoesen.
Kevin Fallon, Wycomico County, District Three. First, I'd be remiss if I didn't start off by thanking each and every one of you for your service. I know it's a thankless job. You work very hard, and the way you're compensated probably equates to about maybe a dollar an hour. Councilwoman Shields, thanks for the comment about Bruce and Wycomico Clean. We appreciate that. We've been down in the ditches, literally, pulling out bags of garbage. We have a neighbor somewhere along the Coburn Mill Road corridor who, for whatever reason, is too busy to make it all the way to the landfill and routinely drops dozens of large trash bags off the side of Coburn Mill Road that include diapers. And I have literally fetched bags full of dirty diapers out of Coburn Mill Road. So landfill, obviously, is something that's very near and dear. We've worked together many Saturday mornings. I just want to leave you all with one idea to consider. What concerns me when we talk about out-of-county trash is it's 2025, and unfortunately, people are not as honest and ethical as they could and should be. So perhaps we could explore the idea of commercial haulers who desire to drop the trash in Wycomico County's landfill are required to have a GPS tracking device on their garbage trucks, and the county monitors their route and determines if they are, in fact, ethically picking up garbage in Wycomico County, bringing it to the Wycomico County landfill. So just an idea I thought I'd throw out there, and thanks again. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fallon. Any other public comments?
Seeing none. Council comments?
I'll just say, I went to the Camp Odyssey's 35-year celebration this morning, and it was really great to be part of that. So congrats to all the folks who've, I mean, I say that as a camp counselor alumni from many years ago. It's great to be able to see them celebrate 35 years. And then I want to echo Mr. Atkins' comments about the ethics forum and things online. We just need to make sure that those things are user-friendly. It's not hard to do. Yeah, and then last thing I want to say is, of course, just thank everyone for coming out, thank everyone for tuning in, and I hope they have a happy Fourth of July.
Go on, next one.
I'm just going to say, I had a vacation for two weeks. And for people who do not believe in climate change, you should have been outdoors. It's been the hottest June I think I've seen in a while. And then I want to say also, I listened to the news. I had to stop listening to the news. And I think we all should pray for our community and our country, because we are, this is a terrible time for our country. And I'm being serious now. It's just, you turn on the news, you don't know what you're going to hear. So I think we need to pray for our community and our country. Because we're going to be celebrating July 4th with fireworks, but what is the point when those forefathers, you know, were not following the Constitution? So I think we need to look at that.
Just want to thank everybody for coming out, looking forward to working through the landfill issues. Hopefully, the information pipeline gets opened up a little farther than it has been. Hope everybody has a good Fourth of July. Stay cool, if that's possible. I just want to say our thoughts and prayers are with our friends at the Salisbury City Police Department. They recently lost Senior Corporal Ryan Mitchell, who passed away suddenly on June 20th. He'll be laid to rest tomorrow, and just thinking about all our friends over there. That's all I got.
Presidential comments. I also would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's good to see everybody here and participating in the whole process. In reference to the two legislative bills that we had tonight, the public hearings will be held on August 5th at 6 o'clock, if you're interested in this. That'll be the time for public comments of either one of the legislative bills. In reference to the one in reference to the landfill, we appreciate your clarifications, Mr. Benson, on some very poignant comments that you made. I feel very confident that with the work session that we have in two weeks and with the input from the public, which I think is very important, that we'll come to a resolution. And also, I feel confident that, you know, with the cooperation of the gentlemen that were here in front of us tonight, that we'll come up with a very good resolution on how we're going to land with this whole issue regarding the landfill. Again, I really wish a lot of the discussions that we heard here tonight had been discussions that were presented to this council and to the public maybe a month ago, or six, you know, six weeks, eight, two months ago. I think it would have really helped bring the temperature down a lot. But unfortunately, that wasn't the situation, and the council doesn't have much of an alternative to try to move forward with emergency legislation to sort of nip this in the bud as quickly as we can and bring things back under a more of a sensible control, I think, control measures in place. So that being said, Mr. Atkins, you're right. I didn't check it, and the fact that it's not, and I don't know what you would call it, an editable PDF file, the fact that you can't enter the information online and interact it, whatever you might call it, and then just send it in. We should be able to do that, Mrs. Hurley, right?
Yes.
So, because I get it. Print it, sign it, scan it, mail it, whatever you have to do. Pain, very difficult. So that being said, entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session that we can go into open work sessions. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Legislative meeting is adjourned. First item on the open work session is a, there's a request from the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism to accept from the piece of property from the Hebron Lions Club. It's a land donation. Mr. Steve Miller, pleasure to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the council. Thank you for having me. Steve Miller, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. I'm here tonight to talk to you about a proposed land donation being offered from the Hebron Lions Club to the county through the Department of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. My hope was to just do this presentation in three parts. I'll try to move it along quickly. One, I wanted to just give a real brief overview as to how we got to this point for this specific request. Secondly, I wanted to engage council and answer any questions or concerns that you may have. And then thirdly, make recommendations as to how we move forward, because the recommendations, I think, would be largely based upon what feedback and the direction that the council desires to go. So with that, I'll just provide a little bit of background. The property that we're discussing is the Hebron Lions Club Park. It's located on 212 West Church Street in Hebron. This is very round numbers, but the total property is approximately seven acres. What is being offered to the county is approximately between four and five acres. I'd call it four and a half acres, which is where the park is operated. For decades, the Lions Club, that park, has served residents both in Hebron but also throughout the entire county in offering recreation programming and quality of life opportunities. And while generations of children and families have benefited from the park, the park itself has aged. It's a great little park, but it's seen better days, and it needs some renovation and some attention. Last fall, the Lions Club approached, our department approached me specifically to do an evaluation of the park and to give recommendations to the club as to things that they might improve. So we did that. We went through the entire facility from dugouts and fences, bleachers, you name it. And in November, we provided a list of what we felt like were recommendations as to how they could renovate and modernize the park and bring it up to speed. We continued to engage with them throughout last winter. That conversation expanded to include folks from the town of Hebron, who were also interested in seeing this park be revitalized and improved for the residents in Hebron. And in the course of those conversations, I think there was a real sense amongst the group that there was a real unique opportunity here to do something pretty special, not just, again, for Hebron, but for the entire county, that could really continue the legacy of the club and the park that has been, again, decades-long legacy. So in the end of that process, towards the spring, as we continued to talk and the vision kind of grew and the excitement grew as to what could be, the Lions Club came to a conclusion, and that was that for the vision to become a reality, I think the club realized that the best chance for that to happen would be as if the county owned this and were able to push this forward, tapping different resources and whatever else to make this thing happen. So in May, the Lions Club president, Mr. Gene Brown, wrote a letter to the county executive offering the park part of the property to the county, and there were two conditions listed. One was that any planning efforts that would happen as far as what to do to the park and how to improve it, that the Lions Club would have representation on that and have a strong say in that. And then two, that there would be an area dedicated at the park that would be intended to honor the legacy of the Lions Club and its commitment to the community throughout, again, generations. And so those were the requests that if the county were to accept it, that we would honor those requests. I'll reiterate that what's being offered is just the park part. The Lions Club would have intentions to keep, there's an adjacent event center there and parking lot that would not be part of this donation. They would maintain ownership and control and operation of that. But what they're asking us to take on is the park itself. So that's a very quick version of how we got to this point. There are other pieces that I'm sure we'll talk about as questions, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or any feedback from the council as far as the offer of the donation or anything else associated.
I guess questions, typical questions in my mind. Why should the county take on the liability when the town of Hebron could?
It could go either way. I think what was talked about is that the county, I think, would have the greatest chance of impact in as far as tapping different state resources, all of the above approach as far as finding funding, and just the wherewithal to get something like that done. We've just got a bigger capacity, I think, to take something on like that.
And with this, then, I mean, I noticed all the land around it, of course, is, I should back up and say, I played softball there. I played, you know, 35 years, 40 years ago. It's from T-ball. Yeah, so I played soccer there, too. But that's not, this is not coming with parking spaces, except for the couple, you know, there's a couple spaces you can kind of turn into that hasn't been touched up in years. But I guess we, it's a fairly small space considering the need for parking if we were to make it a bigger issue.
Yes.
A bigger park. So I would assume we'd have to annex further land all around it. Is that part of the plan, separate from this, what we're looking at here today?
Yeah, I think that is something we would definitely want to look at. The farmland around it is privately owned, so that would be something that we'd have to explore if that's a possibility or not. But I do agree that parking is very limited there, and if you're going to expand that park, that's certainly part of the issue that you'd have to address there is to give people access to come in and out.
And for my own, I apologize, I haven't been in all of the conversations there. I knew you all, there was a councilwoman had a meeting, a public meeting about this. I guess this interaction compared to Metro, West Metro Core, are we, what's the relationship?
Yeah, so the relationship, this has been discussed at our last few meetings with the Recreation Parks Commission. Mr. Wynn can provide details on the public meeting. The thought was, we had produced a master plan for the West Metro on 11 DeShiel Road, and we went through a whole public process and had a vision kind of for what we might do there. As this issue, and this was a side issue when it first started, and again, this, we were consulted by the Lions Club to, hey, how do we, how do we bring this park to life? As that conversation evolved and the vision of that got bigger, those two properties are very close in proximity to each other. So the conversation kind of shifted, is do you really need both in that proximity? And so the conversation at the Recreation Parks Commission was, as part of this, do you revisit the proposed land conversion? Some council members were here, some were not, but about five or six years ago, there was a proposed land conversion to remove the restriction at the 11 DeShiel property, the state restriction, and remove that and place that over to Conley Mill, which would restrict that to be a future park. So why those were married together is if you do take on Hebron and we do develop that, and if we did couple that with the land conversion, I think it'd be important to incorporate some of the public comments that we got in the West Metro, that that would be included here in Hebron, so that you're not pulling the rug out from that whole effort, because we clearly heard from the public that there was a need for certain things, and I think we would try to marry those things together in Hebron. So that, I don't know if that addresses your question, but...
Yeah, I suppose, does that put us further away? If we develop this park, if this becomes its own park, does that put us further away from any ability to, you know, take care of Conley Mill? I mean, wouldn't it be nice theoretically if the town said, hey, you know what? We'll take this on, this is going to be a big thing for us. You know what? County could somehow, if we could, I know it's not that simple, but theoretically, just for example, stop everything we're doing at West Metro Core and then move all that effort and money back towards where we were going years ago, which was towards Conley Mill. You know, could we do both there, or is there, trying to get an understanding of all the relationships between each?
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts with it, but if I'm understanding your question, can you do both Conley Mill and Hebron? Is that what you're asking?
Could, I mean, could, you know, the town of Hebron, theoretically, if they took over this, not that they would, but I don't know if there's been those communications or anything like that, but, you know, could we, if we basically stopped West Metro Core and then the town of Hebron took this on, would we not have then county resources available, the POS money or others, to then shift into, you know, to move back to Conley Mill? I would love to see Conley Mill advance as quickly as possible, and I don't, and forgive me, is I don't, I know you have all this up in your head, and I don't, not trying to, but the sooner that we could do that, the better. And so I'm wondering whether or not you could, you know, knock out two birds with one stone. And, but then again, I guess, I actually, maybe I'll back it up and just say, I know that, I don't know how the residents of the town, if they've been, did you say we've asked them?
Yeah, we've engaged quite a bit with the town, and we discussed all those different types of scenarios, and I think we're...
They'd rather see us have it?
Ultimately, it was the club's decision, because it's their property. So I think they were open to either. So there's multiple things. So I think there's question of ownership and operation, and the operation part of that, that would be something that we would work with the town and the club as to, you know, who maintains it and whatever else. But as far as, going back to Conley Mill, I think you could do both Hebron and Conley Mill. We're, I think you know this, but we're not afraid of taking things on and getting things done, and I think, you know, we take them on and see them to completion. I think we could do both. We have approximately $300,000 that we've saved from the farm leases at the West Metro. So that is a starter that you could use to leverage to get grants and other things. Now, where that would go, if that would follow to Hebron, or that would go to Conley, or wherever, that could be a decision for some other time, I suppose. But to answer your question, if I am answering it, I'm attempting to, I think we could take on both. I think it makes a lot of sense in the fact that to renovate a park at Hebron would be a whole lot less expensive and less difficult to do than to start from scratch, which is what we have at 11 DeShiel, which is just a flat piece of land with no utilities, no infrastructure, no parking, no roadway, no, so that is a much heavier lift than to renovate an existing facility. So in that respect, I think we reduce the burden. Conley Mill, of course, would be a large undertaking that I think would take a long time. I don't think that's something that happens right away. That takes a long time. Of course, they're digging right now. So I think that is a long-term project. But what this would do potentially, if the council wanted to pursue the land conversion, what this would do is then put a restriction on that so that there would be some level of confidence that...
This just has to happen first. That way, we are reassuring the people on the west side that they are taken care of, because that is something that they reiterated multiple times. Sorry, Josh, I didn't mean to cut you off. That was something that they were very adamant, and Jeff, I'm sure you could remember that, that they did not want to be forgotten about on the west side, but they did, they were not excited about a park on 11 DeShiel Road. And we had, I know you were out of town, Steve, but we had seven or eight people that were on that street that lived on 11 DeShiel Road that did not want a park there. were on that street that lived on Levin de Shiel Road that did not want a park there. They would rather, say, farmland or ag land or trees, or just not a park in their yard, in their, pretty much right around the corner. But they were, they were more excited about this happening, and if this happened, or something like this happened in the area, maybe not this one, or somewhere around here, I'd like to see this happen, but if a park in a different area where it made more sense on the west side, they wouldn't have a problem with the land transfer. Because land transfer is, it's a, Steve, you'll tell us, but it has to be, there are certain parameters. It's a hundred square, it's a hundred acres. The farm is a hundred acres on Levin de Shiel, so you need a property that is a hundred acres or greater to match it, to do a swap. And I'm sure, Steve, I don't want to cut you off, but you can talk on that if you want.
No, that's accurate. If you wanted to, when you purchase with state program open space funds, that when you acquire, it's an obligation to keep that a park land. If you're to do what's called a land conversion, which is to remove that restriction, it is, it does have to be equal or greater acreage, it has to be equal or greater appraised value, it has to be equal or greater recreational value. We went through the process with the state on this particular conversion. If the council desired to convert from West Metro to Conley, the state approved that once, and this was several years ago, and then it stalled and did not happen. We have all that information available. We could send that back to the state. They approved it once, and I think, I think we could get that done. If it was not Conley Mill, you'd have to find another property that's greater than a hundred acres, and that meets the qualifications, or stick with it, and then we proceed with our plan, and we're obligated to build something there, because we've been farming it for over 15 years now, and that was not why the state gave us money to purchase it. So at some point, we got to do something with it, it's either build something or something else.
And I'd just like to add, this is kind of like, kind of like a golden nugget, because Conley Mill was donated. It's a donated piece of land. This land we had to purchase, so if we sell it, or retain it, or whatever, if we, if we sell it, though, that's money that we could potentially earn off, and then transfer the land acquisition to Conley Mill, that doesn't cost us anything. So we could potentially make some money off of this and return it back into Park and Rec somehow.
I think if we sold it, though, we'd have to return funds, too.
Yeah.
We don't have to return, so we didn't buy with open space money?
We did buy it with open space money, but if you convert it...
Oh, good.
Essentially, they bought that other property that you converted to, even though they didn't.
Then we can use that money to build whatever we want on these two parks.
Yeah, that, I think with the conversion, yes, you open the slate to anything on Levin de Shiel, so whether you wanted to look at selling it, whether you wanted to use it to mitigate, whether you wanted to, whatever, you can do whatever, whatever you want, and that would be obviously an open question, but...
Let me just say that, now, Laura, you took the notes, the community, they did like a poll where they all raised their hand, right? And you probably remember this, Jeff, but the consensus was, was they would rather it stay ag land, like whatever, if we, if it's still in our possession, make it so that it's ag land, or make it so that it's forest, and as long as it stays that, they don't care if we have, own it or not, like we could sell it, you know? But they, but before we sell it, since it's county land, they were like, they suggested, or they would really like to see it just stay farm or trees, and that was just what they would like.
I had a question on that, Steve, because I attended both of the prior meetings for it, when, when the group that came in, that you brought into Wyomacook County, had the entire design structure of either ball fields or soccer fields, and there were, it was well-attended. There was at le, there were at least a hundred, maybe 150 people in both, and I don't recall at that point in time, any of those individuals saying that they didn't want to see West Metro Core develop.
Yeah, so we, we did, those were well-attended meetings, and I think one of the clear things that we heard in that process and that kind of guided where we landed in that master plan was lighted soccer fields. I think that was the number one thing. There were other parts of that park plan, but lighted soccer fields was the clear desire. And so I do think it's important that if we are to shift, you know, plans change sometimes, if we are to shift and focus the resources in Hebron, that we take those ideas and those desires of the public, that we don't abandon that. I think we take that and try to incorporate that into this plan in Hebron. So I think you can still meet those, the, what the stated need of the public was, instead of property A, it's property B in the same proximate area. I think if you can address those needs, the people I've talked to that were very vocal during that process, I think were on board, and we can certainly get other public feedback on that. So I do think that's a very important point. I don't think we ignore what we heard during that process. I think that needs to be incorporated into this. If we decide that Hebron represents a more cost-effective, more realistic opportunity, I think we got to incorporate that and also bring some of those people into that planning process in addition to the town of Hebron, the Lions Club.
And the size of the West Metro Core property compared to the size of this property?
Much, much bigger. West Metro is a hundred acres. What we're talking about is four and a half, and then if you have an opportunity to expand that, I think that would be worthwhile. But yeah, totally different ballgame, which again, when you're talking about developing it, makes it much more feasible.
Which I think is, I mean, is a West Metro Core, I mean, that truly, I think, would be something that the, could be, could benefit the west side of the county. I see this as more, more limited operation, where it's going to impact the greater Hebron area, because from what I saw, there's a ball field, there's a basketball field. There's one ball field, one basketball field. When this comes to us, it'll be a resolution, correct, Ms. Hurley?
It'll be a resolution.
Resolution. So when this comes back, it'd be nice to know as far as what you consider to be the cost of the renovations with the ball field and the basketball courts, the parking, and I noticed from what you gave us, which we appreciate that, the lighting and the buildings. I'm just trying to kind of get an idea that the council would have an idea of what the fiscal note might be to take this on, and then what the annual costs would be anticipated, because you're really good at that. You're very good at that, you know, whether it's maintenance, or whether it's taking care of the lawn, the landscaping. It'd be nice to know that. But I do like what you said when you said this would be better than having to start from scratch. I think that's a very good point.
Yeah, and I think, I'd be happy to come back with estimates. I think it's difficult, because one of the things we would do, if we did decide to acquire this, I think one of the things we would do is try to engage a master planner to look at the property and how to, how do we best configure it, parking, et cetera. So it's hard to put a number to something when, I lost my, it's hard to put a number when you don't know exactly what everybody wants. Yeah, if it's lighted, not lighted, so all that would impact costs. So we can, we can try to give some type of reasonable range. I can say with confidence, though, that I think the number that you would invest in Hebron would be certainly less than what we would do with the blank slate in the other. And again, that's neither here nor there, but it's, it would certainly be less expensive.
Yeah, and I like it when we can collaborate like this. You know, we did an excellent job on the west side down with the community center, where we literally turned that over to that organization, allowed them to take, and what they've done with it is absolutely...
They're doing a great job.
Incredible. So, yeah, when we can try to, you know, create this type of cooperation with the local level, I like that. Josh, you have a question. You've been patient.
I'm fine. So, how things change? You know, sixteen, seventeen years ago, the citizens over in that area were up in arms, and they had to have a park. And Gary Mackey's at the time was the planning and wrecking parks director, and they found this piece of land, and it was quite expensive, and then we found another piece that was about half as much, and that's what we ended up acquiring. Everybody had to have a park over there. I mean, it was, they filled that church up, I think twice, to be honest with you. So anyway, nothing happened over these years, and then the next time it popped up, we were at the firehouse in, I guess, Hebron to talk about it, and I seen a lot of people there concerned about, you know, lighted, lighted fields and stuff like that. Room was full. I think John said it might have been a hundred people there, at least. So now we have another meeting, and nobody wants it. So, and James mentioned selling it. I don't think I'd sell it, because in about 10 years, there's going to be a bunch of people that want it again.
That could be.
You know? We're, I guess we're making some money off of it from farming. The citizens over there are protected from development from it. We're not going to build houses on it, nobody's going to build chicken houses on it, it gets everybody upset. But I don't think, I don't think you better sell it, because you might be looking for another hundred acres of land somewhere over there in about 10 years, so, anyway.
Josh? I just want to bring up one quick thing, just for council's awareness, if we, if we did, I'm not saying we will, I'm not jumping into your, any discussions you may or may not be having with any landowners that are surrounding it, but if we were, the land surrounding it is in a, is in the priority funding area and is in tier-two growth area, so that is part of Hebron's growth area, where they've decided that they want residential development and other kind of things. So just have to be thoughtful as part of that goes. But if, on that note, if they were to continue to build, and even if it was a smaller development, you know, having a nice park in the middle of your community adds a lot of residential, like adds a lot of value to your homes, so I think that makes a whole lot of sense. So, and as a person who spent a lot of time in Hebron in that area, I think it'll hold, it would be a lot, it would be really nice to have a really good caretaker of this property, and I think the county would be.
I'd like to just, I know we have members of the Lions Club here, and I'd like to commend them for what they did. I miss the fact there's also tennis courts here, so this is a huge operation. It's really nice to see that having been done for the community, really nice.
Yeah, and I love, I mentioned it, but I love the legacy part of this, is that the Lions, you know, for literally generations have provided this, and I think for us to be able to perpetuate this and improve it for the next generations, I think is an important part to them, certainly, but I think, I think we can honor that in this and really make this something special, so.
Well, Ms. Miller, you always cross your Ts and dot your Is, and it makes it so easy for this group here, so we appreciate you coming in.
Thank you. Can I ask, just, just so I have some direction to move forward, so I know this is just a work session, but as far as the council's desire to, you know, make this an isolated thing, just to consider a land donation in addition to, you know, the other things that we've got going on, or is the council thinking more this would be instead of, and maybe relook at that land conversion? Because that potentially would change the paths that we pursue, or is that not determined at this point?
Repeat that, he can't, he lost.
So, sorry. So I'll say option, option one that we're putting forward is, we consider accepting this land offer, and that's in addition to all the other plans that we have. So that's one option, is this, this is on top of everything else. Option two would be, we couple this with looking at that land conversion, and we say, hey, we're going to shift off of what we were thinking about at Levin de Shiel, we're going to try to incorporate that over here and do the land conversion, so that, that is a different path and a kind of a different approach, and I'm just curious as to...
Do you have to shift all the land, all of it, from Levin de Shiel? I mean, you're trading a hundred acres for four acres, right?
No, the conversion would go to the Conley Mill. You have to do something greater than...
It wouldn't go to?
No.
Okay.
No.
And I'd say if we did that, and there's still an issue, and people still want to park there in 10 years, like, we'll still have that property on Levin de Shiel if we don't sell it.
I think before we did the conversion anyway, there would be a public hearing for that conversion. At that point in time, the people of the west side could tell us what they'd like to do.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to do one or the other. I like the option A, where we move forward with this. What's your thoughts? I mean, do you have a recommendation?
I think, I think you can do it two separate issues. I mean, I think they, they will eventually connect if we choose that second path, so I do think you could, you could say, we like this idea to accept the land and proceed, and then we can take up, you know, I can make another request to come as far specifically to the land conversion as a separate issue, and I'm happy to do that.
That makes sense.
Okay.
That makes sense. So, yeah, let's, is, is that okay? We're good? Yeah, so I guess then you would work with Ms. Hurley on a resolution to get this prepared and get it back to us.
And would, would you like, I guess we can talk offline, too, but would you like a work session as far as that land conversion, or? Yeah.
What do you think, Josh? Yeah, we could certainly do that. I don't know, I mean, if you think we're ready, I mean, I don't have any problem with that property there. We don't, no idea. You mentioned some comments about Conley Mill. We transfer it to Conley Mill, is it going to, it's just, it's going to sit with Conley Mill for years and years and years and years until we finish with the mining and all that? We don't know what the best use may be just yet, and I'm all for Conley Mill. I understand that. I understand Conley Mill will be in excellent use, but my concern is, which will be more efficient for the county if it takes us another 20 years to develop Conley Mill? Would it be more advantageous to look at doing something with the west side? And we do this all the time, understanding that we could take advantage of that property and then move forward on Conley Mill. That's something that we really need to know. We really do.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think we can certainly flesh that out in a work session, but I think as far as the mining, my understanding is that there's still years to go as far as mining out there, and that's, that's one thing. But I will note that the property's 230-some acres, and the conversion does not include the pits that they're mining. We specifically excluded that so that it wouldn't disrupt anything. So I think you could plan, or maybe phase a park if you were to, down the road, open a phase that doesn't interrupt what...
That's a great idea. Maybe that's, that's where the best use would be, would be to transfer that from the west side to that area of Conley Mill. That would be great.
And we can always still, if there's an issue, we can always still keep Levin de Shiel and do something there at a later date, but we can offload that, that requirement of having to use Levin de Shiel as a park and just put it on Conley Mill, because we know we're going to put a park there. That's my thought on it.
Yeah, and I think that's where some of the pressure has built a little bit, is that we've sat on Levin de Shiel too long, and I think there is an obligation to do something, which is why we, when the land conversion didn't go through several years ago, that's why we shifted and pursued this master plan, because we knew there's an obligation to do something. We got to build a park or do something. So if we're to shift off of it, that gives some definition to that, and I think would move us in a positive direction.
It may, it may be the perfect, the perfect move if we don't have to worry about the pit, yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's all right. I'd like to recognize, being we're talking about the Hebron Lions Club, Lion Doug Jones and Lion Phil Tillman, and that's L-I-O-N-S. They're in the back, and so we, we thank you for being here, and if you all had anything to do with this, thank you, so, anyway.
I will say, both gentlemen had a lot to do with it, and they were wonderful to work with. Okay? Yes, so I'll, if I'm understanding, I'll put in a request to come back to talk about the land conversion, and then I guess we'll come back on the, the land donation...
First.
At the, yeah, at the next meeting, I guess.
As soon as we, yeah.
Or whenever, whenever.
Also, when you come back, get back the revenues that we've garnered from that land over there.
From Levin de Shiel?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can get your numbers on that, yeah.
I will.
Very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next open work session is on a legislative bill, 2025-08, which is the professional services contract. We have Mr. Illuminati here and Mr. Lufman here.
Hi, good evening. Director of Administration.
Andrew Illuminati, Department of Law.
And I was apologize, I was in Ireland last session, so I was remiss in not welcoming Councilman Ennis, so it's great to see you up there. Congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you. You're aware of what this legislative bill proposes, and we're certainly quite open to what your thoughts might be on this, and if you have any direction for us.
Do you want to begin that?
Sure. So, this was the first time we've heard about professional services, met with counsel attorney, and went over a spreadsheet which covered the previous fiscal year, because today's the new fiscal year, so fiscal year '25, and there's hundreds of professional services that range from softball umpires to large design contracts. And they're all assigned by department. I believe that council received feedback from department heads about the importance of professional services in a timely manner, the need to be able to have a matter addressed as needed, because the county does not have employees that can cover every aspect of every task, and that's where the professional services can come in and review. All professional services, with an asterisk, are budgeted throughout the year, not line item, one by one, but, for example, there might be an allocation of a certain amount of money to a certain department. of money to a certain department for a specific source, and then that use is then set aside, and if it's for, we'll use the library as an example, the county puts aside a certain amount of money for the county, for the new Sarbanes branch at the Ward Museum, former Ward Museum, that's a bulk assessment that is budgeted, council approves, and then through the course of the year, the library develops a plan to spend that money, to have the infrastructure analysis, analyze, then goes through that process, and so then those professional services, there's a contract, it's reviewed by legal, and then it goes to the executive before the executive signs off, then it goes to finance to make sure the money was budgeted, and that there is a purchase order in place to account for this money, so that the money is not spent that is not there, so going back to money that is not there is the asterix, which is, unless there's a budget amendment, at which time it explicitly comes before council, and at that time, the full context of what the budget amendment is for, I think we just, we've done a number at the end of the year, all of those are examples where council then, because it wasn't budgeted, but tractor breaks down, or some piece of equipment needs to be replaced, there's not a budget item, it wasn't anticipated for that year, professional service, budget request, there's an amendment, and through that process. So, at the request of council, we met with council attorney, went through the spreadsheet, and used the last page as an example, and went through and showed the department, showed what the service was, whether it was bid, for the most part, they are not bid, and there's a number of reasons for that, depends on the department, it depends on the type of service, it depends on the turnaround for the service, for some of these, the original project was bid and competitively bid, and then because we're in multiple phases over multiple years, that original contract was awarded through the competitive bid process, but now we're in the third phase in the fourth year, and so we're just in professional services at this point. Believe the position of overall, I believe the county executive said, you know, if you want to approve her professional services, she'll submit those to council for review, that this, overall, the legislation as shown by the department heads would be burdensome. We propose that we just began a fiscal year today, that tabled this legislative bill for a period of time, a quarter, have a quarter of data, provide the spreadsheet that's already been provided, but for the new fiscal year, and come back in a quarter and talk about all of these professional services over the past quarter, get specific department head comments on each one, additionally, these are all contracts, these can all be provided through Public Information Act, this is not, there's nothing hidden here, this can be provided to anyone at any time through a simple request, and truthfully, I don't, I think providing once a month or once a week would probably be too burdensome, and there's a lot of negotiation back and forth on the professional services, on what the terms are going to be, we have standard terms and conditions, that captures a very large chunk of the contracts, but some contractors are doing something very specific, and there's bond language, and they go, my, my review plans don't need to be bonded because I'm not going to be exposed to liability, and, you know, we have to edit those, and there's back and forth, so I think a month, we might not even have any, or may have one or two, so I don't think that's productive, but at the end of the quarter, we can provide the similar spreadsheet in advance of that work session, you'll have that worksheet, if there are specific contracts you want to discuss, we could have the department heads write up a response about those, where they came from, but again, that's all within the actual contract itself, which can be either provided to council without MPIA at mere request, or to any member of the public through MPIA, so that's really where this is at this point in time, again, these are all budgeted, though not line item by line item, there's the larger concept of, you know, looking at Parks and Rec, on that last page, we have a number of softball matters, and there's a line item for the softball, and then finding ops, and then they get paid for that service, and it's, it's that simple, most of these individuals are doing it because they love their county, you know, for the smaller fees, they just like their basketball enthusiasts, they're softball enthusiasts, and they've been doing it for a number of years, the fee that they charge the county is minimal compared to the hours they give, and then there are larger ones, and we see a number of GMB and DBF, and these are large employers in our area of quality professional services that not only does the county rely on, the city relies on, the surrounding municipalities rely on, and we've bid with them, they've bid with us, and that may be why you're seeing them as no big contracts, but it is because the original large project that was multi-phased over multi-years was bid, and now we're in that final stage, so there weren't any specific requests about any specific contracts at this time, we have an entire year's worth of information, but going forward, I think we can easily address them on a quarterly basis, and if that's not sufficient, then at that time, on, you know, bring the, the bill off of the table, and then we can have a analysis to see what's missing, how much work would there be for council, how much would that actually delay the implementation of these services, how much would that put the department behind, so.
So, I'm not sure this piqued everybody else's interest, but there was one individual that we did a, done a pretty large professional services contract that was supposed to be, what, at the, helping at the, for the SWAT, do you want me to use his name or not?
No, I wouldn't.
Are you talking about the consultant we have in, in the executive's office?
Pardon me?
Are you talking about a consultant that, that we...
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So he worked on the SWAT, correct?
Amongst other things.
What else did he work on?
Uh, well, landfill, actually, originally, as that, as we inherited a, a landfill construction project that was over a year past due, he sat in with myself, the executive, our geotechnical specialist, and the solid waste staff, as well as the construction company to iron that out, so we could get them on track and get cells eight and ten done, that was a huge lift.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, that was a, that was a huge lift.
Yeah, what else did he, SWAT, landfill, anything else did he work on?
Yeah, well, he's worked on, you know, the, the general aviation issue, and, and by the way, when, when he, he did work on SWAT during the day, but he also volunteered his time to chair that at no cost to the, to the county, to be the chair of that SWAT analysis and all those meetings, just like he volunteers to be on the airport commission, and that's not a part of his contract either, but he's also has institutional knowledge, he's literally worked for every county executive we've ever had, including the acting county executive now, either through contract, and his contract really didn't originate with us, the acting county executive had him under, under contract, then we met with him multiple times before we decided to bring him on, so there's, there's no replacement for the institutional knowledge he has of this county or the projects, and so we go to him on all sorts of things on this, I mean, we had talked to him recently about, you know, the, the solid waste issue we're having, and I suspect we'll have several other topics like that in the future, but he also, he also helps at, you know, he, he's literally been in my role, so he literally knows the full scope of county services, so he can help out in any of the number of ways.
You still have the county executive yourself, assistant, and you had an assistant county executive, I mean, county administrator until he left, and then you just got another one, and you have all the department heads, so how, how many consultants do we need?
How many consultants do we have in the executive office?
I don't know, how many have you had?
One.
Okay, all right, but he's working on multiple projects?
Yes.
Okay, and you say he was involved in the, if he was a consultant for the landfill, apparently there wasn't much consulting going on, when we have to look and see what's condition we're in there now, I mean, was, was that forecast or not?
Well, we got the aerial, as I was saying, we got the aerial this past March, and that's when we really drilled down to discover the, the situation we're in, and then I believe it was a month or so ago, you know, Adam started working with Andrew Illuminati on their own brand of legislation, so the, the issue was that, and, and you didn't allow us, we weren't allowed to go through the whole timeline, but Andrew had a timeline where we were told by other people, both in county employ and vendors, that we had many years left, and that, that was erroneous information that we were handed.
But your consultant didn't pick that up?
Well, he didn't have the aerial data, and when we got the aerial data, we, we found it out.
I think part of it, and we're not particularly targeting any, any one individual at all, and we recognize the benefit of, of these individuals that are out there, but the issue is, is that, you know, we're also responsible for the county funding, just like any, you know, just like the executive branch, this, this body is also responsible for funding all the different departments, and we have been quite willing over those, this last several months to agree to increase salaries of practically probably every department head here, and so we have to question sometimes, you know, people say, well, what, what are you, what are you spending your money on, and we are, we are increasing them substantially, and then at the same time, though, we're finding out that we're having a lot of contractual work being done as well, and, you know, anybody would ask, why if we're having these expectations with these particular salaries, why are we then also having to find that in order to get the works, the work done in, across the board, that there, you know, that there are individuals that have to be brought in as consultants to do the work, and so as such, in order to make a rational decision as, as a body here, and to represent the, what the public expects, we feel that we really need to know exactly how far, how, how far, and how, how far the outreach is on these, 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 these additional consultants who are supporting the existing structure that we're already supposed to have, as opposed to be executing day to day. I'll go to a Mako meeting, Bucky, and I'll have somebody mention something to me about working with the county, and I'm the president of council, I'm going, well, I don't, I don't tell them, but I have no idea, I have no idea they're representing the county, so the real idea here isn't, isn't to try to challenge anybody or anything to that effect, we just want to know what's going on.
Sure.
And we don't want to get caught up in a, in a, in a, in a situation where we have, we're flooded with, you know, three hundred contracts, we don't want to have to review inconsequential contracts, as, you know, Andrew mentioned quite a few, I'm sure, but the point being is that we need your assistance to tell us how to make this work, in a most efficient manner, that's not going to be an encumbrance upon the department heads, certainly won't be an encumbrance on our staff, and, and, you know, the, the executive, the executive's office as a whole, so that's what we're just trying to do, we need more information, we want to put a process in place that will allow the county council to be a, a greater part of that process, so that the public is a greater part of that process.
Absolutely, so we can use the next quarter, we can, rather than attempt to implement the legislation, sit down, go through what council wants, and use this first quarter to hammer it out, because the other part that we see unfortunately is, something's drafted, something's passed, then when we get down to the granular analysis, we have to go back and do amendments to legislative bills, and that doesn't happen, and it then becomes tough, because then we have to do first reading, public hearing, second reading, sixty days until effect, and then it's candidly, a hundred and twenty days later, before that first problem got fixed, and possibly another problem popped up, but if we use the next quarter, provide this data, sit down, make possibly a small working group of council that wants to meet with legal to get updates, to go over the contracts, then if there is the need for that legislation in the future, we will have already ironed out that process so that it can easily be codified, so that we don't have to try to rework it again in the future.
This is one example where we don't want to rush to judgment.
Exactly.
We're, we're, that's why we're trying to, to move this forward, you know, as a legislative body here, because we want to make sure it gets done right, Josh, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I guess in general, I, I don't want, I don't want big government, you know, you could look at big government, small government, well, you know, you can have small government and big process, I want adequate government and very little process, as little as possible, but at the same time, we've got to have transparency.
Sure.
And we obviously, as you know, we all don't, we don't want to be, I don't need to hear the depths of, you know, which, you know, what contracts we're getting for various road app, you know, whatever it is, all, I don't want the county council personally to get into the nitty gritty of administration, into the muck and mire of all of that, that is why we have an executive branch, but at the same time, I guess the main thing, I think if there is any kind of core intent of this, is we don't want to show up to a meeting and, you know, have the person come
Sure.
Patch you on the back, hey, I'm your lobbyist, good, nice to meet you, you know, like, I didn't know that, okay, great, now I look like a fool, or, or, you know, go on the other one, or have people ask you, hey, is that other person still around, you know, the one that's been working there, like, I don't know, so I guess, how do we address that in a way, in a substantive way, it'd be great if we can do that outside of codifying things, I don't want process, but at the same time, personally, I think I just want to make sure, I mean, I don't know if there's a better way to do that, where we can have, actually have a real communication without having to go that route.
Well, you know, one of the things that we would get, you know, in my role at the state from DNR, is occasionally, I had to do as legislative director mandated reports, and I think a similar thing where we could, you know, I don't know what the timeline would be, but we could do a report and, you know, make sure that every department head who has these contributes, you know, maybe a spreadsheet and says, you know, maybe it's quarter, this quarter, these are the ones we've engaged, with a description on why, and that, because I'm sure no one has any questions about, also, I'm sure you guys probably have no questions about an umpire, that's sort of self-explanatory, but you may have questions about, like, one of the firms he, he mentioned, GMB, and what, what they're doing, you know, at the airport or what have you, and that, that's totally understandable.
I think, just to be clear on my side of things, though, I don't, what I don't, we don't need more dummy sclerosis, we don't need more government, you know, bureaucracy as part of this, well, we do need to just know, I think the main part, at least what I've seen over my time, and I can't speak for everyone else, is just, it's mainly come out of the executive branch, just to know, at least, at least the executive office to be able to know, hey, what's happening for these other things that, that could impact us, but that's only me speaking, I don't know.
Can I, I'm, I'm sorry, can I just make one point?
All right, bud.
The, the consultant is not on this list, and I think there's two or three other, at minimum, that are not on this list, so whatever comes out, it has to be a complete list, it can't be an incomplete list.
I just want to say that when you gave, Bucky, when you gave the, what the consultant did, you was a whole lot of stuff that he does, and to me, when you have a consultant, I look at it as a training person, you consult with him when you first got in there, whenever you harden, and to me, that would be something you, you would learn, whoever would be assigned, and then you get rid of the consultant, but you know, you can label somebody a consultant and keep them there forever, getting a big salary, you know, and if you haven't learned what he knows, and just giving it to him, you know, what happens if he gets sick, passes away, or any of that kind of stuff, who's going to do the work?
I, I don't...
He probably said he's seasoned, so right now, it's been three years, and some people should be seasoned without the consultant to save some money.
Want to answer your, your question, I, I don't think that there's any replacement for the institutional knowledge that individuals bring, so I, I would not foresee us filling the role, because there's, there, no one, I, I'm not aware of anyone that I could say, hey, when county executive polit did a similar situation, what did you do, when, you know, this got brought up under executive call, or what happened, you know, that, I mean, it's a person of one, I mean, I, I'm sure, and I do talk to former, you know, county administrator, Mark Kramer, or Matt Kramer as well, on, on things, but, you know, he hasn't been, you know, county employed in ten, twelve years, so his, his isn't as fresh, but, but the question, or the comment that was, was asked, Pam had actually answered earlier in the week, so that's why I asked her to, to come up on, on the individual and why he wasn't on the list.
Pamela Lynn, Finance Director, so the issue associated with what Mr. Benson brought up is that the list was provided based on purchase orders, because this consultant works on multiple different things, there is not a specific purchase purchase order. There is a budget available for items, and this information was passed along to, to Mrs. Hurley previously. So that also goes to the definition of what a professional service is. The definition of professional service could be narrowly construed or significantly very big, you know, have a huge definition. And so items that don't have a purchase order don't, are not on this list. Another one is our bond counsel. You will not see the bond counsel on this list. We pay for the bond counsel through our bonds. That's not purchase ordered. That's done through the bond. So there is no way for me to put it on a purchase order, because I have, they gather up all their costs, and at settlement of the bond, they get paid. So again, yes, this list is, is not 100% complete, because it is drawn from UNIS on a purchase order basis. If we have somebody who provides service to us, Davenport, our investment company, our investment advisor, or our advisor on, on bonds, they're paid through the bond. I have no purchase order for them.
But, but I do think if we got into the report, you know, to, to answer Mr. Benson's question, I, I don't, I see no problem, though, including people who are not on a purchase order on this, and do our level best to, to put anyone, whether purchase order or not, that we feel, you know, is appropriate, we would, we would put them on, on the report. I mean, that would just make sense.
Which is great. I, I get that.
Just a couple of things, that we, we absolutely are not looking for the hundreds of contracts and whatever that were sent. I, I don't think anyone has the time nor the desire to filter through all those.
That's what the, that's what the new council representative does.
It does, okay. Thank you, thank you for giving me that. But, but the distinction I would see is there's specific consulting contracts for technical advice or a specific study, as opposed to general management consulting. And I think that may be the distinction that I'm kind of thinking about.
Good point.
Likewise, the, the contract that I have seen has no duration, there's no time limitation, there's no specific scope identified, names a few, but not limited to. So I think what we would be more, I would be more prone to focus on as far as narrowing this greatly down, would be to those kind of, those types of contracts, and to know that, the, what is the scope? I haven't had, met up with people in the public that have told me, you know, there's a consulting working force, because I've only just started here, but I understand that not, you know, nobody wants to be in that position where you've got this surprise and don't even know that that is, that person is working across whatever, whichever departments. So it would be that the contract has identifiable scope, timeframe, and just, you know, typical limitations that you would have in any contract.
Instead of using the next quarter's data, could we use the last quarter?
I didn't prepare the spreadsheet, so, I mean, that's something that could be provided. So we used the last page as an oversight. It wasn't, we could provide the last quarter, but truthfully, like, the spreadsheet was six pages, somebody had to go in and fancy-lically look up, was it bid? What was the cover, like, letter that described the services provided? So if the request is to see the last quarter, we can do that, and we can also, well, I'm not doing it, unlike with the, with the landfill where I'll be out there measuring waste.
Wait a minute.
You want to do it?
So, so here's, here's where the, doing the next quarter is easier for finance, because finance does see every payment that goes out the door. So we would be able to, between the purchase orders and every payment go out the door, be able to give you a more complete look. For me to go back to this last quarter and try to figure out those other things that aren't on the purchase order is a lot of time.
Agreed.
So the labor intensiveness of, so right now, Charles is on vacation, or actually, I think he's had a, a training, and tomorrow's a vacation day, but either way, he's not in. So I'm looking at every check that is going out the door related to the check runs for last week. As such, during that check process, we could then have a list and go, this one needs to be added because it's not on a PO.
Are you okay with that timeline? Are you okay with that timeline? She's saying that in order to really do this efficiently, she would need to begin to, to start tracking the data in this quarter.
Because again, I, we would literally have to then pull every invoice that we have done for the last quarter and go over invoices that we've already done, versus add it to a step that we're, we're already doing for new invoices coming in. So it would save us a whole lot of time to do it on the current ones versus having to go back and recreate the old ones.
Okay with that?
Well, so, you know, you've got what you call open checkbook, which has kept up the date all the time. I haven't been on there in a few weeks, but why can't you just post that, just like you do open checkbook, every contract, and send it to the council administrator?
That's fine if she wants to take her time. I do not have the time to, with the staff that I have, to go back in time.
I don't mean going back. I'm talking about going forward. I'm not talking about.
Again, I, I, it is not that labor intensive to add it to the process we're already doing.
Right, okay.
So us adding it to the going forward, I don't view as a significant time.
Could you do that?
Yes.
Okay, and then send it to the council administrator, and if the county council wants to come in and turn the, I don't mean send it to us, so it's out there and, you know, everybody can see it, just so the council wants to come in and say, hey, I want to see what contracts you've done.
Again, I'm looking for, I'm looking for a timeframe. Is it, am I providing it to her on a monthly basis? Am I providing it to her on a quarterly basis? What is the first period that council's looking for? I would think a quarter is a significant look at, because right now, we are gearing up and writing our annual contracts.
A quarter would be better for you?
Yes.
It's fine. We're okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to mention that the introduction of that bill was made at the last meeting, and you have 60 days from the date of introduction to take action, so the bill will die.
I, I understand that. I understand that. I appreciate you, you bringing that to our attention. I understand.
And then I have one other question for Pam. Is there a way that we can flag these somehow? I know when I spoke to Charles or, via email, he said, right now, you guys don't have a way to like filter professional service contracts. Going forward, I mean, is there a way that you can code them somehow, so it'd be easier to run a report?
Um, that is a much larger project, because our, the GL, the, the general ledger that has been created over time, has different names and different accounts for each department and each area where, you know, county council could have a line item that says consulting, while another one has professional services, while another one has professional services and consulting. And so to try to make that change, I have, what I view, and again, this is Pam Olin, your Finance Director, what I view is more important things to try to make sure that we're doing. So again, adding the step of figuring out those things, yes. Can we in the future potentially implement that? Yes, but I don't believe that can be implemented right now.
Step to consider based on the data that's provided after the first quarter.
Well, I, I think if you find during that reporting period, if you find that there is, you know, a department or something like that, then we certainly, or departments where, where you really need more information, then we certainly, you know, be open to a work session where, you know, you could sit down with us and the department heads and talk about it.
So going back to the consultant, they worked on the SWAT. Where do we add on the SWAT? What has been done about that?
Well, let's try to stay focused on this project, Joe.
I'm focused, it's just a question.
I know, but you do that.
So is anything going on with the SWAT?
Well, we attempted to hire an individual who would work on the SWAT, but it was cut from the budget, and then the suggestion was the Assistant Director of Administration would take that on, so he will be taking it on.
You, you mentioned picking up the phone and calling somebody like Matt Kramer, asking a question. Is that how this consultant worked? You just picked up the phone and asked him a question, or?
No, he, he generally comes in, you know, if we have, you know, for meetings and things like that, he'll come into the office and we talk.
So one example, Shani, of something that has, with the consultant that has been phasing out, when this administration came on, and I, and also for myself, he was available to us to help us go to New York with the rating agencies, which none of us had any experience on. Last year, we went to New York without him. We're planning to go to New York again this year without him. So again, it's not, it, it, there, there are things that are being transitioned off.
Good.
But it, it, sometimes, the length of time it takes to transition off may not be as quick as what you may want, but it's to pass along all the knowledge that we need to make this county be better.
I mean, he was naming all these jobs, you know, things, but I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, so he, he went to, he helped, when I took the role under the acting, he helped with the bonding then. He went to, I think your first year, we, they came to us, so he helped with that. He went to New York, one, the first year we went to New York. Last year, he didn't go to New York. This year, he's not going to New York. It is just the internal team, and then Dave Ryan does go with us, because he is economic development for our county.
And we certainly recognize the value, but we just also want to make sure that we don't miss the bigger picture of how are we operating as efficiently as possible as a county.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the ability to work with council, get this information out there, and then keep developing from there and not have to go down the route that we were originally looking at.
So the council recognized the fact, as Ms. Hurley stated, that the current legislation would, would die. Give everybody time to really regroup, and Pam present a quarterly, kind of like a quarterly report for us.
Yes.
With, with the most current information that we need, and together with Mr. Lufman and Mr. Illuminati. Everybody good? All right. Thank you all very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
I was just going to say, we do have it scheduled for a public hearing for the July 15th meeting that has already been advertised. So it will be on the agenda for July 15th, but we'll have to make that public announcement.
Well, I think, you know, in, in the sense that we could, we could make that announcement, and at the same time, if there's anybody that have any comments they'd like to make, like probably these three gentlemen right here, we'll still let, we'll still let them come to the table. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a problem. Thanks for the heads up, though. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
James?